Let's go ahead and formally call the meeting to order, and I'll have the clerk of the board read the introduction and then call the roll.
Sounds good. In compliance with directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, this meeting is live streamed and closed to in-person public participation. Temporary procedures are subject to change pursuant to guidelines related to social distancing and minimizing person-to-person contact. To make a verbal comment at today's meeting, dial 916-875-2500. Follow the prompts placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. When the chair opens public comment for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter, followers will be transferred from the queue into the meeting to make a verbal comment. Written comments are always accepted. Please feel free to send your email comment to boardclerk@saccounty.net, and your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. And absolutely, Commissioners Raythal?
Here.
Tatishi?
Here.
Wong? Commissioner, thank you. And Commissioner Borja?
Present. Thank you.
And we do have a quorum.
Wonderful. All right. Do we want to swear in the applicants at this time? So we have them all sworn in before we go into the items today?
If that is your preference, we most certainly can do so. We are looking, just swearing the applicants for item number one. And the planner is Emma Patton, and there's Ryan Friedman, who is the owner, and Michael Malinowski, who's the architect. So if you wish to address the commission, please prepare to be sworn. We ask that you raise your right hand, and the appropriate response is "I do." Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this commission is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. Before you make your comments, if you would, please state your name for the record and make the statement "I have been sworn," and that will be when the chair asks for comments from the applicant and/or the owner. So before you make your comment, if you could just make the statement, state your name and make the statement "I have been sworn." And with that, at your leave, Commissioner Tatishi, should I call item number one?
I think we need to do the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll go into item number one.
Perfect. Thank you.
So we'll begin with the pledge. "I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." That way we can call item one.
Item number one is for a use permit located at 5445 Garden Highway in the Natomas community. And the environmental document is that it's exempt.
Right. We have county staff to present.
And I see that we have Emma on board. Emma, can you hear us?
I can.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Can we try one more time? Emma, you may have to mute one of your... There we go.
Lydia, is that better?
That's much better. Thank you, Emma.
Okay, wonderful. So, good evening. This is Emma Patton, Associate Planner with Plenty Environmental Review. On this evening, I'll be presenting the use permit request for the Garden Highway project. Next slide, please. Project is located on the Sacramento River at 5445 Garden Highway in the Natomas community and is developed with a single-family home. Next slide. The site is located within the Garden Highway Special Planning Area, or SPA as we refer it. There are single-family homes on either side of the subject parcel and agricultural land on the opposite side of Garden Highway. Next slide. The applicant requests a use permit to allow, in addition to the existing residence, which deviates from the minimum rear yard setback and maximum height requirements. Next slide. This exhibit is a site plan, which includes the proposed addition. On this exhibit, Garden Highway is to the left, and the Sacramento is to the right. The existing home is 2,029 square feet and two stories. The applicant is proposing to construct a 1,064-square-foot addition to the first floor, a 1,300-square-foot addition to the second floor, and then a new 353-square-foot third floor. This will include the expansion of an existing deck, a new two-story detached garage with a second-floor hobby room, and a raised driveway. Next slide, please. So this exhibit demonstrates the applicant's request to deviate from the minimum setback requirements. The minimum rear yard setback is 30 feet, measured from the top of the bank of the Sacramento River. The proposed is only 14 feet from the top of the bank. Next slide, please. So here you can see the elevation of the proposed residence. This is the side of the house, which will be facing Garden Highway. The house is raised to comply with the Flood Plane Management Ordinance. Next slide, please. And this slide demonstrates the applicant's request to deviate from the maximum height requirements. According to the Garden Highway SPA, the maximum height for the single-family homes is 30 feet from the top of the nearest levee. The proposed is shown at 29 feet, 11 and 15 sixteenths of an inch, so very close to that 30-foot maximum. Given that the proposed is just barely under the maximum allowed height, the use permit request includes a deviation from the height standards to allow a degree of error of six inches. Next slide, please. The CPAC considered this project during their March 11th meeting and unanimously recommended approval. Next slide. Staff reviewed the proposed and found it to be consistent with the general plan and surrounding development. As I mentioned, the project is located within the Garden Highway SPA. Staff has reviewed the proposed against the requirements and special considerations of the SPA, including Section 501-257. Staff reviewed these requirements and concerns and found that the proposed has limited ground disturbance, wouldn't require the removal of significant vegetation, including oak trees, and would provide a safe parking resolution, which would not require backup onto Garden Highway. Next slide, please. So based on this analysis, staff is recommending approval of the proposed. Specifically, staff recommends that the planning commission recognize the exempt status of the request and approve the use permit, subject to the findings and conditions included in the report. Next slide, please. So that concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions, and the applicant team is also available on the line. Thank you.
This is Lydia with the Clerk of the Board's office. Just want to confirm that we still have you on board, Commissioner Tatishi.
My apologies, my app is not letting me unmute myself, so can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, apologies for that. So are there any questions of staff from the Commissioners?
Hi, this is Commissioner Wong. I have a question for staff. Can you just verify that the condition number one also includes obtaining any application encroachment permits that are, that may be required by the Central Valley Flood Protection Board?
Can you repeat your question one last time?
Yeah, I'm just looking for verification that the condition number one of the project also includes that the project applicant obtains any applicable encroachment permits that may be required by the Central Valley Flood Protection Board?
So condition number one relates to compliance with county ordinances, statutes, regulations, and procedures. The procedures of other jurisdictions would be subject to their codes.
Sorry, give me one second while I pull it up. I thought I saw... Hold on. Sorry, I'm scrolling. I'm looking on, I guess it's page 17 of our materials. Conditions slash mitigation measure and responsible agency under Sacramento County Office of Planning and Environmental Review. Number one, this action does not relieve the applicant of the obligation to comply with all ordinances, statutes, regulations, and procedures. Any required subsequent procedural action shall take place within 36 months of the date on which the permit became effective, or this action shall automatically be null and void. So my question is, does that condition include, does that condition include, I guess, the project applicant making sure that they get the necessary permits from the Central Valley Flood Protection Board? And are you saying that that's not within our purview?
So Commissioner, this is Chris Bohulie, Principal Planner. I think that's exactly what Emma is saying, is that that condition is really related to the county's ordinances and our requirements that are within our purview. However, the applicant team is going to need to work with the state and other regulatory agencies outside of the county's purview to get approval. And that will be their requirement to do.
Okay.
This is Dane Jordan with the PUD Architecture. I work for Mike Malinowski, the architect. The project was already reviewed by the Central Valley Flood Protection Board and the United States Army Corps of Engineers. We obtained approval from both of them prior to submitting to planning, actually.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Can we bring the applicant forward, then?
Hello, this is Ryan Friedman. I've been sworn in, and I'm the applicant.
So first and foremost, are you comfortable with all of the conditions as presented tonight?
Absolutely.
Great. Is there anything you'd like to add in addition to the staff report?
No.
Okay. Are there any public comments, then? Or are there any questions of the applicant, I should say, from the Commissioners? All right, hearing none. Do we have any public comment on this item?
And no, there are no public comments on this item.
Okay, then we'll close that part down for item one, and we'll go to the Commissioners. Commissioners, is there any conversation around the item or motion?
This is Commissioner Raythal. I'd be happy to move the staff recommendation.
There a second?
This is Commissioner Borja. I'll be happy to second. Thank you.
Right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the item? Hearing none, can we call the roll?
Absolutely. Commissioners Raythal?
Yes.
Borja?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
And Tatishi?
Yes.
And staff recommendation, the motion passes.
Great, thank you. Will you call item number two?
Yes. Item number two is the Sacramento County Climate Action Plan. It encompasses, it's a county-wide, and the environmental document is the addendum, an addendum to the Sacramento County General Plan Update Final Environmental Impact Report.
Good evening, Commissioners. Todd Smith here, Principal Planner for Sacramento County. And I would also like to note that we have staff from Ascent Environmental, the county's consultant on the Climate Action Plan, who are also on the line, as well as other long-range planning staff who have been working to develop the Climate Action Plan. I've got a few slides to go through, so let's jump into it. Next slide, please. So starting with a little bit of an introduction for the Commissioners and for the public. The Climate Action Plan was developed in response to a mitigation measure that was contained in the county's... I'm sorry?
Go ahead, please.
Okay. A mitigation measure that was contained in the county's general plan from 2011 and the Board of Supervisors' Declaration of a Climate Emergency, which occurred in December of last year, 2020. And so this Climate Action Plan integrates two previously-prepared plans, the Phase One and the Phase Two A Climate Action Plans, into a single comprehensive document, and it incorporates community-wide measures. And we began this effort with public engagement and outreach in 2016. And the Climate Action Plan includes specific measures that reduce greenhouse gas emissions, not just from community-wide activities, but also from Sacramento County government operations. And it includes in an adaptation strategy. Next slide, please. So I want to touch briefly on the public engagement effort. This slide has a lot of data on it, but starting with 34 meetings, four community workshops, and then an email subscription list that has over 6,700 subscribers. We use that throughout the process. We also translated the materials for some of these workshops into Spanish. And we prioritized a few of the workshops in Sacramento County's environmental justice communities. Next slide, please. Throughout the multi-year public engagement process, we sought input from a number of folks in the community, a number of environmental interest groups, development interest groups, members of the general public, non-government organizations. And we used all of that to help shape the strategies and the measures in the Climate Action Plan. Those public workshops that I mentioned were really about gathering the community's ideas and concerns. I mentioned that we held two of those at disadvantaged communities, and we translated those flyers in English and Spanish. And then we had a focused stakeholder working group to represent a wide variety of interests, a number of nonprofits, industry associations, community partners, government agencies, and utilities. Next slide, please. I also want to touch on what the components of the Climate Action Plan are. First, we have the greenhouse gas reduction strategy, and that outlines the specific reduction measures to be implemented. And those measures are broken up into quantified and non-quantified categories. Quantified means there's a number associated with it, in terms of greenhouse gas reduction. Then we have an adaptation strategy, which is about how we deal with the effects of climate change. What do we do as the county government? What do we do in the community to adapt to climate vulnerabilities and increased resiliency? And then finally, a section on implementation and monitoring, which requires us to continually assess the success of cap implementation and adapt over time. And finally, there's the appendices. There's a number of appendices in the Climate Action Plan that provide additional details and support the strategies that were identified. Next slide, please. So we had to start with the greenhouse gas inventory. When we started this in 2016, we had a 2015 Community Greenhouse Gas Emissions Inventory and a County Operations Inventory. And you can see how the emissions are categorized in both of those pie charts. And really quickly, you'll see that residential and commercial energy and on-road vehicles, that's light-duty vehicles, cars and trucks that we drive, those sectors make up the largest components of both the community emissions and the county operations emissions. Next slide, please. And so from that set of emissions inventory, that data set, we forecast out to 2030 to look at what is projected in terms of emissions in all of those sectors. Again, on the left, you have community greenhouse gas emissions. On the right, you have county operations. And we see again onward vehicles and energy, both residential and commercial, in the community emissions chart. And on the county operations side, we have commute, the vehicle fleet, and then buildings and facilities. Those three are the biggest components of county emissions. Next slide, please. From there, we looked at how to define a reduction target, starting with the State of California's Climate Change Scoping Plan, which is from 2017. That document sets a statewide target of sit metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. That's what MT CO2E stands for. So the statewide target is six metric tons by 2030. The county's forecast emission rate is 4.8 without any of the measures in the Climate Action Plan. And I want to make sure that folks understand that. The county's forecast emission rate is below the statewide target without the measures included in the Climate Action Plan. The Climate Action Plan does propose measures that would go beyond the state target, would actually get us below that 4.8 number. Then we also reviewed the Declaration of Climate Emergency that the Board of Supervisors passed in 2020. And what that does is calls for a number of things, including the county to achieve carbon neutrality by 2030. And so that goal is very ambitious. We are fortunate to have agency partners like SMUD, the Sacramento Municipal Utility District. They are doing an excellent job by promoting and actually adopting a carbon-zero plan. That helps the county quite a bit, among all the other jurisdictions that SMUD serves. The county has committed to further updates to the Climate Action Plan, as well as the general plan, to meet that carbon neutrality goal. And we believe that the Climate Action Plan is the first step to achieving carbon neutrality by 2030. Next slide, please. So how do we get there? The reduction strategy is broken up into these main five components. So clean energy, that's providing clean and affordable sources of energy. Low and zero emission vehicles and equipment, and that really supports electrification of vehicles, electric vehicle charging infrastructure, sustainable fuels, and fuel efficiency measures. Green buildings. When we're talking about that, we're talking about incorporating design features that would reduce or eliminate the need for fossil fuels. On the right side, we have natural and working lands. We know that the county has a number of significant amount of open-space lands and agricultural lands that are really prime opportunities for sequestration and carbon dioxide through preservation, through increasing the county's urban forest, through open space preservation and carbon farming. We'll get into that in a little bit, what that means. And then finally, I mentioned earlier, the transportation sector was a really big one. We see a really great need for reduced driving in single occupancy vehicles, and we want to promote alternative transportation modes. So public transit, alternative modes of transportation like trails, carpools, and transit-oriented development are among the ways that we can achieve that. Next slide, please. So carbon farming, this is Measure GHG1. And really, this is promoting and increasing carbon sequestration on ag lands through carbon farming plans. And so this gets us about 377,000 metric tons per year by 2030. We've been discussing this with the county's ag commissioner and see a need to develop this program by 2024 that provides sequestration opportunities, education, and resources for the agricultural communities of Sacramento County. Next slide, please. So the second measure that we're highlighting tonight is the elimination of fossil fuels in new residential buildings. This is Measure GHG7. It requires first pre-wiring for all electric appliances and equipment in any mixed-fuel, new, single-family residential and multifamily residential buildings prior to 2023. Mixed fuel means served by both electricity and natural gas. And then the second component of this measure includes the county developing what's called a REACH code, to reach beyond a statewide code to require all electric residential buildings starting in 2023. So that's a really urgent priority for us. Following cap adoption, we would see a need to prioritize that. Next slide, please. I also want to touch on infill development. That's something that we heard quite a bit about as we went through all of the outreach for the Climate Action Plan. Infill development was one of the ways that the county can achieve reductions in vehicle miles traveled, which then has a side effect of reducing air pollutants and greenhouse gas emissions in the county. So we see a need to facilitate that type of development in the county and incentivize it. And this measure calls for an infill fee on master plans and new developments that are not infill. And this fee would be used to facilitate the type of high-quality infill development or redevelopment that we need to see in order to achieve greenhouse gas reductions. Next slide, please. This is one of the county operations measures. So those are in the cap itself. They start with the three letters, GOV. This measure is really aimed at reducing vehicle miles traveled from employees commuting. And so we're looking for a really robust, remote work continuing after the pandemic. That's something we all adjusted to over the last year and a half, two years, is working remotely. And so we're calling for 30% of staff days countywide to be remote work. And we know that not all staff can do that because of their various job descriptions. That's why it's on average countywide. Also calls for alternative work schedules, like a 980 or 410s, that would reduce VMT on the days where the employees are off. That measure also includes promoting alternative commute options. That would be carpooling, transit, and electric vehicle utilization. Next slide, please. So that's the new development approach and the county portion. Now we have to deal with the existing residential stock. So this is a tough nut to crack. The county has a lot of building stock that's older, more mature. And so this measure, Greenhouse Gas 6, calls for a point-of-sale requirement for mixed-fuel, single-family residential to upgrade to a minimum of one gas appliance to be replaced with an electrical appliance or to provide an upgraded electric circuit that would support future electric appliance replacement in the future. We frankly have heard a lot of concerns about this measure, and we are committed to ongoing dialogue with folks who are concerned about it and may even revise it. But obviously, we'll need to hear what the planning commission has to say about this one. Next slide, please. This is just a couple of the other measures that are in the Climate Action Plan. Urban forestry, we're looking to, as I said earlier, maintain, enhance, even increase the urban forest to provide shading. Though it's not solely about carbon sequestration, shading can actually improve energy conservation in adjacent dwellings and can reduce the heat island effect. We're looking to partner with Sacramento Tree Foundation and prioritize tree plantings in environmental justice communities that perhaps are lacking abundant urban forests. And there's a co-benefit here with adaptation measures related to increasing temperature. Another measure, Greenhouse Gas 4, is dealing with electrification of existing commercial and non-residential. So earlier, I talked about dealing with the residential buildings. This is... This is commercial and non-residential. And so we're trying to assist local utilities to implement uh commercial energy efficiency and electrification programs. Um and we would develop uh outreach programs with the utilities to provide education, um maybe even some videos. This also has a benefit or a co-benefit rather with temp eight and temp seven. Uh there's a similar program, um actually I already mentioned it for for the residential. And and then G H G ten is an E V infrastructure program. So uh there's been an an ongoing effort over the last several years, the Sacramento uh plug-in electric vehicle, electric vehicle collaborative. Uh they've developed a really robust uh E V infrastructure plan. E V readiness and infrastructure plan that is aimed at increasing electric vehicle network capacity throughout the county. Uh we've got some some data points as target indicators here on the slide. Uh looking to increase um the availability of chargers for utilization by the members of the general public. Next slide, please. So moving on to the uh adaptation strategy, and this is really uh composed of five overarching goals. Uh that are addressing climate impact and the county's vulnerabilities. And we're trying to prepare for increases in temperature, extreme heat days, heat waves. Uh obviously, we all know about the increased risk of wildfire and smoke events that have been occurring uh over the last couple of years. Uh increased drought, we're all familiar with that over the last couple of years as well. And coincidentally, yesterday we had increased flooding. Uh and then sea level rise, so all of these uh these these five effects are uh about adaptation. And how we uh create a more resilient Sacramento County, not just for us in government, but also for the communities we serve. Uh next slide, please. So implementation, uh this is going to be a major effort for Sacramento County and we'll have full-time staff to implement the climate action plan. And it's not just the the planning and environmental review uh group who's doing this. This will be multiple departments, uh multiple uh technical uh experts uh involved in implementation. And so this generally, the implementation tasks. Uh include reporting on a regular basis annually at a minimum to the board of supervisors. And then providing regular updates on our progress uh on capital implementation to the public. Uh we, implementation section calls for coordination with uh other county departments and a climate emergency mobilization task force. This is something that was um specifically called for in that climate emergency declaration adopted by the board. Uh we see a need for ongoing coordination with nonprofits and community-based organizations. Uh we really want to build on the strengths of those who are on the ground in the community. Um because this is a a qualified climate action plan, we see a need to implement uh and adjust. Uh the cap when it's necessary in response to ongoing performance checks as well as public feedback that we receive on along the way. Uh we also are committing to updating the community greenhouse gas inventory on a regular basis. Uh that's one way that we can track progress, uh whether we're meeting our goals. And then finally, uh providing updates uh on the clap, on the cap to regional planning agencies like CACOG. Sacramento Area Council of Governments uh and other organizations and to collaborate on best practices for cap implementation. Uh next slide, please. So environmental review for the cap. We have prepared or our consultants have prepared an addendum to the general plan update environmental impact report. Um remember that the climate action plan commitment was made in that context. Uh it's actually a policy and implementation measure in the general plan. And so um we are following secret guidelines and developed an addendum to that E I R. No new environmental impacts associated with the climate action plan were identified. And now uh this is gets a little bit wonky, but uh bear with me. Through this process, evaluation of alternatives is not required with the preparation of an addendum. We did feel it was important to develop four strategy options uh for implementation. Or for for other measures in the climate action plan. Uh we developed those through public outreach, through the feedback that we heard uh along the way and in consultation with that stakeholder working group. Um next slide, please. And so really at a high level, these are the four strategy options that were developed. Uh number one was focusing on infill development. So this option calls for uh strategies that strongly encourage uh new growth within designated infill sites. It would also raise the infill fee uh in that measure G H G twenty three to twenty five hundred dollars. Strategy option two uh is community-wide carbon neutrality. Uh and this would call for amending the climate action plan to immediately transition the county to carbon neutrality by twenty thirty. Uh strategy option, strategy option three calls for carbon neutral new development. And so this is uh instead of community-wide carbon neutrality. This is focusing on zero net greenhouse gas emissions from projects needing a general plan amendment. Uh or the urban policy area or urban services boundary amendment. To really really focusing on new growth. Outside of the U P A or U S B. And then strategy option four is adaptation focused. And this would not ad- adopt additional G H G reduction measures. But it would instead focus on adaptation. And we felt this one was important to include because uh the analysis done for the forecasting shows that Sacramento County is on track. To actually exceed uh the statewide targets. And each each one of these options was fully evaluated uh in the uh addendum to the final E I R. And we felt it was important to bring these four options forward in addition to the proposed gap so that decision makers could weigh uh the pros and cons. Frankly, uh all of these options. Next slide, please. And so general plan consistency analysis, uh this is a a fair amount of the staff report that's in your packet. Uh the cap is consistent with the general plan, uh which is uh for for those who don't know, the the general plan is the. Uh framework for uh future development within Sacramento County. It is uh comprehensive. Uh the climate action plan actually complements the general plan with additional greenhouse gas reduction measures and climate change adaptation strategies. And so if adopted, the cap would be incorporated into the general plan as a supporting policy plan. Uh the climate action plan is actually uh supporting the county's existing growth management strategy in the general plan. And the existing uh South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. I mentioned this earlier, but it bears repeating. Uh the county is committing to an update of the general of the cap with initiation of the next major update to the county's general plan. Which we see um from a time horizon standpoint, twenty thirty is the the rising year of the general plan. So we see a need to do that major update uh within the next uh several years. And that comprehensive general plan update would be able to explore uh a number of new policies aimed at reducing sprawl. Uh protecting farmland and open space and increasing infill development, uh thereby reducing vehicle miles traveled. Next slide, please. So staff's recommendation uh is that the planning commission adopt the rec- the resolution recommending that the board of supervisors find the environmental document adequate and complete. Approve the uh proposed project, which is the Sacramento County Climate Action Plan. And amend the general plan to incorporate the cap by reference as a policy plan. Uh and that concludes staff's presentation. Uh I know that uh there are a number of speakers signed up on this and that there's a substantial amount of comments. So staff is available to answer any questions from the commission. Uh we also, I want to remind folks, we also have SMUD and uh the county's consultant available to answer questions as well.
Great, thank you for that presentation. Um I I will open up to my fellow commissioners if you'd uh if there are questions of staff at this time. Um or we can go to public comment um and then return to uh staff.
This is Commissioner Rathel, I'll kick us off if that's all right.
Absolutely.
Uh my first one is is on this infill uh development. Or or infill development impact fee or the impact fee that's charged to greenfield developments to support infill development. Uh it says there's no quantifiable impact and I was curious, um there's no way to quantify that at this point?
Um that is correct, it is not a qualify, or excuse me, not a quantified measure.
Is that because we expect it to be minimal or is it because we haven't identified where we would spend those funds? Or or whether it would discourage greenfield development? I'm just trying to understand where it's.
Yeah, I think it's a combination of those things and um. Perhaps I can ask either Dan or somebody from Ascent to weigh in on the technical aspects of modeling if it's necessary.
Yeah, I I think overall I have a concern that we're including a lot of non-quantifiable objectives. And I get that we're trying to add on things that we may not know the impact of, but we want to go in the right direction. Um but I I also kind of feel like the climate action plan, the purpose of it is is to quantify things. So seems like a lot of things in here are non-quantifiable. So I, yeah, I think I need to technically understand why we're including so many things that we can't quantify at this point.
All right.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is Dan Krekelberg with uh Ascent Environmental. So um I can uh explain that non-quantified approach um for the infill. So really when.
I apologize for the interruption. This is Lydia with the clerk of the board's office. And sir, can we get you sworn in for us before you make your comment?
Sure.
Okay, um please raise your right hand and the appropriate responses I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this commission is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do so affirm.
I do.
And you've already stated your name for the record. And if you would just make the statement, I have been sworn.
I have been sworn.
Thank you, please proceed.
Okay, so um we have the the infill development um option in the plan. Um we have it as a measure and then as one of the strategy options. Now, the the fee would be collected um and it would be put towards incentivizing infill. Um but uh the extent to which the infill is is developed. We we did not go and and model um that amount of development. Um what we have in there is a fee that could be collected and then put towards incentivizing that type of development. Um but we didn't look at a a forecast specifically of of how um that specific type of of development would grow. Um as a result of the of the fee.
So the, I know one of the strategy options was to take the fee from a thousand to twenty five hundred, but we really have. No modeling or technical analysis of whether a thousand dollar fee would reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Or a twenty five hundred dollar fee would increase greenhouse gas emissions more.
Well, uh an increase would um, you know, it it would support uh additional infill development. Um what we're trying to avoid with putting numbers to that uh uh is uncertainty. So if we're if we're not uh entirely certain that it would result in a specific amount, then we're not going to in- include that as a number. Um because we don't want to have that uncertainty um and and try to estimate based upon that.
Yeah, I I think a lot of these are estimates, but okay, that answers my question. Um, thank you, thank you for that answer. I do have one more, um and I I think it was brought up in one of the the comment letters, um the greenhouse gas um number five. And is there a statewide mandate um going in requiring electrification of residential a year after? Um or I feel like our timing is off by a year of a statewide mandate.
Are you referring to um? The the future statewide uh energy code updates?
Correct.
Uh yeah, I believe ours are in advance of that.
Hi, this this is Dan again, I'm happy to chime in about that. Yeah, so the um the energy code that's going into effect um for twenty twenty two. Um which actually goes into effect in January of twenty twenty three. Um it does not go as far as mandating all-electric new construction. Um it provides some a code support um that that is kind of transitioning um towards and and supporting uh electric new construction. Um but it does not go as far as mandating it. So this particular measure would um come in front of the state in terms of of making that a mandate.
Okay, and then I guess the other question I have is really on the. Um do we have an estimate for the cost if we do require electrification of affordable housing? What that adds to the per unit cost on affordable housing?
It should not actually uh increase the cost of affordable housing substantially, given that the there are a number of incentives available right now uh through SMUD. Um I wonder if Steve, you can address that, the the status of incentives?
Uh good evening, this is Steve Johns from SMUD. And um yes, I can. Uh currently SMUD has uh with our incentives, uh we find that construction of all-electric housing housing units. Are less expensive than traditional dual-fuel units. Uh and even without our incentives, we do find that uh frequently they are less expensive than um construction of uh new unit of uh dual-fuel units. And finally, uh we just uh a new rating rate structure. And qualified affordable housing uh multifamily structures are allowed to have um virtual net energy metering for their solar systems. Which adds another financial benefit for affordable housing for all-electric construction.
Okay, yeah, I just read in one of the comment letters from an actual affordable housing developer, they were estimating seventy five hundred to fifteen thousand dollars per unit. Of increased cost for electrical, so that doesn't jive with what our um what one of our comment letters said, so uh. Okay, thanks for your answer. Um staff, do you have any opinion on that other than SMUD?
Um I think it's also important to note that um electrification would eliminate the need to build uh gas infrastructure. And so that uh the addition of. Electrical requirements would al- would eliminate that addition, that upfront cost for gas infrastructure.
Okay, thank you for answering that question.
Uh I will add one um, one more thing to that, this is Dan. Um so there's the, there are uh cost effectiveness studies um that must be done when adopting a reach code. Um to to demonstrate um that uh that it's cost effective for for different types of um of development. And so that would be a part of the implementation action that uh when the reach code is adopted. That um looking at the cost effectiveness for various types of um of housing, including uh multifamily affordable housing. Uh would be analyzed as part of that reach code implementation.
Okay, so cost effectiveness would take into account current supply chain issues. And possible other, you know, needs for uh natural gas, like it's specific industries that would need it?
Yes, um sorry, this was Todd Smith again. Um so that that subsequent step of developing that reach code and the ordinance, uh we would also need to look at um supply chain issues. You know, from the manufacturers who actually build the equipment, um you know, the HVAC, the um water heaters. Uh all the equipment that that or appliances that go into new development, not just residential, but on the commercial sector as well. So that would all be included in that um feasibility analysis. But that would all be included in that um, feasibility analysis.
Okay, I think that wraps up my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rathall. Uh, any other commissioners have questions for staff?
Hi.
Good evening, this is, uh, go ahead, ma'am. No, no, go ahead, ma'am.
Oh, um, I was just gonna say, this is uh, Commissioner Wong. I have a a couple of questions if you'll bear with me. Uh, my first question is just sort of of a general nature. And that I noticed a lot of the measures uh, seem to be based on um, education or voluntary actions that are done by uh. Participants, I guess, um, or stakeholders. And I'm curious as to how were those voluntary actions translated into? The G, how how did that translate into the GHG reduction potential numbers that were given in the um. Uh, given in the materials or as a part of the cap like so if it's voluntary, how do we know if? People are going to actually do these things and therefore, how are we able to come up with those GHG reduction numbers?
Um, I'll take a a first stab at this, but I'm also going to rely on Dan since he's the modeling uh. Expert. So what we do in that process, uh, remember that I I, one of the slides had a target or a forecast, uh, I should say. And the modeling that's done uh, needs to assume a certain amount of um. Reductions and so. We have some uh, forecasts for participation, um, whether it's through a a more. I'll say robust regulatory mechanism like a requirement at uh, point of sale or other. Um, building permit trigger, for example. But then on the voluntary ones, I'm going to need to defer to Dan on those.
Sure, um, so yeah, this is Dan here. So measures that are put into place, um, you have some that are are looking at um. For volun- uh, voluntary measures and participation. Um, we've gone back and looked at um, indicators of. How that participation results in um, energy efficiency or in. You know, greenhouse gas emissions from energy efficiency. Um, so for that, we've relied on some studies from um, utilities that. Have put programs like that into place. Um, and based upon on their success and their track record of doing that. Um, of, you know, doing outreach, um, getting uh, participation from a specific amount of of homeowners as a result of that. Participation, then we're able to look at the energy that was saved and convert that into greenhouse gas emissions for the reductions. Um, so we have in the plan uh, in appendix E, a down of the assumptions that went into the modeling for each of the quantified measures. Um, so you know, if there's a specific measure, um, there's a table in there that will show the assumptions that went into that. And and that um, are used to help those.
Did, did we lose him?
Still here.
Okay.
Yep, um. Well, I hope that uh, helped answer the question. Um. Yeah, that's uh, that's our approach for uh, for, you know, quantifying from from voluntary measures that have a a certain participation rate. Um, and I'm, if there's any specific uh, jurors that you have a question, uh, happy to answer that.
Um, okay, thank you. No, that that does answer um, my question. I I I'll have a follow-up question later, but I think I'll save that for. Um, when we're kind of uh, discussing, when we're when we're out of the technical question phase of the presentation. Um, and my my second question is, and this is kind of getting into the weeds of the cap, but. You know, I noticed that for measure GHG thirteen, when it's talking about revising the parking standards for non-residential development. Um, I I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So this measure would allow for the developers. To sort of determine what kind of parking needs their development. Requires. So they don't have to conform to any specific. Standard parking ordinance, but they just say, okay, we're going to build this. Commercial mixed use, whatever, and we need X amount of parking spots. So that's how, that's what we're going to build. Is that correct?
That, that's um. Not what, not what it's intended with that measure. Um, so that measure is actually revising the standards to um. For specifically for commercial buildings to actually take out any requirements for, you know, how many uh. Parking spaces need to go in uh, for uh, a specific sized building. Um, and it would, it would actually make it um, so that it would reduce the number of parking spaces. And the idea is that you are um. Then with, combined with some of the measures that encourage encourage um, alternative transportation modes. Um, you would be reducing the vehicle miles traveled um, for that project. So it would actually um. What was assumed for that particular measure was a reduction of uh, two and a half percent of of VMT reduction. By taking out um, extra parking spaces. Um, and then that would. Help reduce emissions by reducing um, single occupancy vehicle use. So that's, yeah, yeah, it it would reduce the amount of parking uh, associated with those projects.
Okay, thank you. I think I I I had it turned around because when I was reading the part that says minimizing parking standards, I read that as. Getting rid of parking standards. So therefore, if a developer wanted to, they could. Increase the amount of parking. And so I was curious on how that relates to a reduced VMT if they're allowed more cars, but. Um, it looks like I was misinterpreting um, how it was written. So thank you for that clarification.
No problem.
And I think those are my technical questions for now. So thank you very much.
And this is Lydia with the clerk of the board's office. If we could just take a moment to restate the uh, method of making a verbal comment today before we proceed. So this is for the general public to make a general uh, verbal comment at today's meeting. Please dial nine one six eight seven five two five hundred. And follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off agenda matter. When the chair opens public comment for a specific agenda item or off agenda matter, callers will be transferred from the queue into the meeting to make a verbal comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Borhat, did you have uh, questions?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you, Chair Tatiishi. I appreciate the time and thank you for the uh, staff, well, as the subject matter experts. Um, in line with Commissioner Wong's questions, um, I I noticed that fifty percent of our carbon reduction really adheres on carbon farming. And the implementation of that carbon farming to reach almost three hundred thousand metric tons of reduction is to implement a program through targeted outreach. It's very much from my perspective, like carrot and not a stick. And so I I I do, I I I do have some concerns. That this is an environmental document that has a state requirement also on carbon. Reduction and 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 fifty percent of our analysis is through a creation of a program within two years that would hopefully incentivize farmers. Uh, not not giving them financial incentives, but to just tell them how good carbon sequestration could potentially be. And then my second question would be is that there is a lot of assumptions on carbon neutrality by the rest of our regional partners such as SMUD. SACOG and and other uh, transportation networks. Um, for the staff, have we considered, should those other mitigation factors from those agencies that we do not have control over? Do not materialize with their goals? Would that then put our cap goals into question? Because right now, SACOG is already having a problem reaching their um, eighteen percent reduction. They're already looking at outer years of funding. And outer years of projects to even reach the carb requirements. So they're already um, a little bit um, kind of in, not in jeopardy. They're not an APS. They're still a sustainable community strategy. But with SMUD also, there's still, it's a, it's a very, you know, it is a very difficult, but I think feasible twenty thirty plan. So. Um, sorry, I think I should have broken down my question, but maybe um, start with the first question, Chair Tatiishi with um. With the carbon farming and then hopefully I can go back to the second question regarding the GHG numbers assumptions.
Sure, uh, this is Todd Smith, staff. Um, I think you're right. Uh, carbon farming is one of our our biggest uh, GHG reduction potential uh, measures. Uh, and we do see a lot of opportunity there uh, for the ag communities. Obviously, we'll need to be successful in all of our outreach and and discussions with those really key stakeholders. Uh, obviously, we know it's it's a an uphill, potentially a an uphill battle, uh, depending on um. Kind of the receptivity of that audience. Uh, but we also know that sequestration opportunities exist, um, whether or not they're, you know, related to actually. Uh, composting or or different types of fertilizer, but actually uh, deep injections. Um, there are certain places in the county where that's um. More viable than others. And so I don't disagree with anything you said. It's a, it's a really uh, aggressive measure. And and that's one of the things that we're going to need to be tracking uh, on implementation. Um, remember that I said we have to do this uh, regular uh, monitoring and updating if we're not meeting our, reaching our goals. Uh, we're going to need to include some other measures that uh. Achieve similar or or more reductions. If any one of these measures that are quantified uh, are not making. Ma- uh, reaching the target. To your, to your second question, um. I think I would answer the same way. If I'm understanding the question correctly, it's it's. What do we do if certain measures are not achievable, uh, that are? Commitments made by other uh, agencies like SMUD or SACOG. I think that's a fair question because um, we haven't seen implementation uh, fully. Uh, since SMUD's plan, SMUD's plan, for example, was just adopted this spring. Um, and that again, that's the same answer in terms of ongoing monitoring uh, and adaptive management. We are including a number of the non uh, quantified measures to really get the ball rolling on some of these um. Things that we can't fully quantify just yet, but we might be able to take. To do some modeling to take credit for them in the future, uh, if they're more fully quantifiable. And to get to that twenty thirty goal. And so we see it as a um, an ongoing effort where we do need to provide that transparency to the general public to make sure. We're actually meeting our goals and if we're not, we will need to adapt.
Uh, thank, thank you, sir. Um, I I did have just uh, one more question, Chair Tatiishi. There was a um, a mention in the staff report about um, how this came about and that. The updated cap uh, does not necessitate a a a full-blown EIR um. Uh, study, environmental impact report study. Um. Uh, as a kind of from the staff level, have we um, had the opportunity to to? Kind of vet um, and see if that would pass muster from any potential um, litigation challenges in the future. Um, and has there been a precedent in other jurisdictions where um, they might have had an updated climate action plan that did not necessitate a full-blown EIR? Um, just word, I understand that this has been a ten-year-long process. But should we um, move this into kind of adoption and then uh, litigation starts, then maybe we could um, hopefully mitigate that beforehand by. Uh, looking at other jurisdictions that might have done something differently, so.
Sure, I, I can uh, take the first crack at that and then perhaps kick it to Ascent, um. Just knowing that they have a lot of experience uh, in this topic. Uh, and so just for context, the general plan EIR was where we made that commitment. We, the county made the commitment to developing a climate action plan. Um. And that EIR identified climate change as a significant unavoidable impact. Um, and so uh, along with all the other uh, topical areas that we normally address in an EIR. And so this uh, climate action plan is really fulfilling that mitigation responsibility that um, was identified in. Uh, the general plan update EIR and in. Uh, the the policies and implementation measures that were adopted as part of that process. And so we uh, as staff did not uh, see or identify any new significant impacts um. Through this evaluation process. And the staff report addendum points to um. The EIR addendum section. Uh, one point two, um, which is page twelve of that document. Uh, that really covers um. The analysis through uh, that we undertook uh, with our consultant to determine whether an addendum was the appropriate environmental document. Um, Jessica with Ascent, do you have anything else to add?
Todd, this is Amanda. I I think I'll, I'll step in here. Would that be okay?
Yes.
Okay. Amanda Oligzulon with Ascent Environmental. Um, yes, Sequo, um.
I apologize. This is, I apologize. Amanda, this is Lydia with the clerk of the board's office and um, I I need to get you sworn in, first of all, please.
Perfect.
Okay, and please raise your right hand and the appropriate responses I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give, this commission is the truth? So help you God. If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
And you've already stated your name for the record. And if you could please make the statement, I have been sworn.
I have been sworn.
Thank you so much. Please proceed.
Again, my name's Amanda Oligzulon with Ascent Environmental. Our team has worked to uh, with the county to to evaluate um. The cap as proposed, as well as evaluate the um, climate action policies identified in the general plan. And and the mitigation strategy evaluated therein. Um, Sequo has a requirement to um, not reinvent the wheel where it is not necessary. In this case, the climate action plan and its, including greenhouse gas reduction measures and strategies. Substantially conforms to the form uh, style and content of what was envisioned in the uh, general plan EIR. That um, evaluation of the um, conformity of this climate action plan was undertaken in an environmental checklist. That serves as the body of substantial evidence I use to evaluate. Whether in fact, any new significant uh, environmental impacts would occur with implementation of this plan. So. It's kind of a stepwise evaluation process to determine what was previously. Proposed, adopted and evaluated, and whether this plan substantially deviates from um, the the. Uh, strategies and measures and targets that were identified previously. Um. So I I think. There was a question also about whether. Other envir- uh, climate action plans have been adopted under different environmental documents or under an addendum. And I would say. Each environmental strategy is unique to the project proposed. But across the state, the climate action plans, depending on their use, form and function, have been adopted. Using an environmental impact report, using an initial study uh, mitigated NAGDEC. And and some have been adopted under an addendum.
Thank, thank you for that. I, I yield my time back to uh, the chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, are there any other questions from the commission before we open public comment?
This, this is Commissioner Rathall. I did just have one more, um, primarily related to development agreements and greenfield developments. I know uh, one of the development agreements, uh, there was a revision that was included in the staff. Um, response to the public comments or maybe the, the process that said, well, one of the development agreements did exclude um. The increase of fees. Um, do we know how many other greenfield developments have development agreements in place which would exclude new fees for greenhouse gas twenty-three?
Uh, yeah, this is Todd Smith. I'll respond to that one. Um, it's really. Those two that are mentioned in the um, staff report addendum. those two that are mentioned in the, um, staff report addendum. Uh, the other development agreements that have been adopted recently, uh, by the county uh, already include, uh, that infill fee, uh, that's mentioned in G H G 23.
So how many of these are already subject, um, to, you said that there's a number of them that are already subject to a thousand-dollar infill fee?
Yes, New Bridge and Mather South. Um, if you're looking at table four of the, um, in the body of the cap.
Okay.
And the rest, the rest of those development projects, aside from Easton and Cordova Hills, uh, do either are not approved yet or do not have development agreements.
Thanks for that clarification.
All right. Um, Ms. Fraser, do you want to explain how public comment will work? And I think we do want to swear in, uh, those who are in the queue for, um, uh, for public comment?
Absolutely. We do have a new procedure that we do need to swear in our public commenter. So if you are in the phone queue and you're waiting to make a public comment, um, uh, we're going to ask that if you wish to address the commission that you prepare to be sworn. And, um, when you make it into the meeting, I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand and, uh, take you through the swearing process briefly. We also ask that you, um, if you have the meeting on in the background, that you turn it down to avoid any issues with the audio, any static, and, uh, and we'll try to make this go as quickly as possible. You will each have two minutes to make your public comment. And, um, when you're ready, uh, member Tatiishi, I can go ahead and send, get the first caller sent through.
Let's go ahead and open the public comment. And as a reminder, uh, each public comment person will have two minutes to address the commission. Um, and, uh, Ms. Fraser will alert you when your time has expired. And, and as a reminder, please state your name for the record and that you have been sworn, and, uh, Ms. Fraser will swear in, um, uh, the public comments as they come in. Thank you.
Member Tatiishi, I apologize. I was misunderstood. We needed to, um, we don't need to get them sworn in for item number two because it's not a, a project um, per se, so that will, uh, cut back on a lot of wait time for, for, uh, uh, the, the members of the public at large and for, um, all of, uh, you staff as well. So again, I apologize for that misconception, and then we can, uh, get going. So I'll have the first caller sent through and we'll move as quickly as we can.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your patience. Please send the first caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting. You'll have two minutes to make your comment. Please proceed.
Uh, good evening. My name is Kentla Chin. Um, any concerned citizen would agree that what we do in the next nine years will be critical uh, to avoid the worst effects of climate change. The county itself recognized this when they wrote the climate emergency declaration this last July. Uh, they said that the climate change is, quote, "an emergency requiring urgent and immediate mobilization of resources." And since it is an urgent problem, when I read through the cap, I was surprised to see how weak and effectual, vague, many of the measures actually were. Uh, for example, the measure G H G dash oh four wants to, quote, "increase energy efficiency of existing commercial buildings." Well, that's a great goal. And how is the county going to do it? Uh, they're going to, quote, "Develop an outreach program that provides education strategies by producing an instructional video and putting it on the county website." That's it. And with that video, the county estimates they can get people to subtract 16,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide from the atmosphere. To me, optimistic projections like that just aren't convincing. I don't have the confidence that anyone is going to go to the county website, watch a video and then take action. And as I read through the cap, I found numerous measures like this, serious problems that the county was going to solve with voluntary outreach programs in partnership. The climate action plan reads like a wish list rather than a real plan. As a citizen who's trying to have faith that our system of government can actually address serious problems like climate change, I'm relying on you, the planning commission, to not just kick the can down the road. In a very short time, there's not going to be any road left. Please reject this draft and demand better. This plan is insufficient. Thank you very much.
Thank you, caller. Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting. You'll have two minutes to make your, your public comment. Please, uh, proceed.
Hi, this is Barbara Breck. I am a Realtor and I was calling, uh, to, uh, voice my opposition to the proposed point-of-sale mandate that's listed in measure six. So I've always been an affordable housing advocate and as a Todd Smith, uh, so dangerously put, we have a mature housing stock in Sacramento, a great housing stock, but very mature. A lot of pre, uh, 1970 homes don't even have grounding. And many of the homes that I sell actually have 100 amp service panels. When you have a hundred amp service panel and you try to add electrification to a home, it becomes a financial burden on someone, either the buyer or the seller. And so I, I spoke with my electrician and just to list some of the costs that happened, uh, anywhere between 3,900 and $10,000 to upgrade a panel, depending on if the uh, wiring is overhead or underground. And it's just too much to pass on. I would much rather see an incentive offered for people to electrify, which, which they should. We support that, you know, I, I want my kids to have, you know, a better place to live. But I also want them to be able to afford to purchase a house. And the more unaffordable we make it when there's a median home price of over 500,000, yes, half a million dollars is our median home price now, uh, the less that we're going to be able to move affordability. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, caller. Please send the next caller.
People to move affordability. So thank you.
Hello caller, you're now in the meeting. We ask that you turn the meeting down in the background and please proceed with your comment. You'll have two minutes to make a comment.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Sam Figuer. I'm the Government Affairs Coordinator for the Sacramento Association of Builders. We have about 700 members that we represent. First, I want to start by thanking the staff and the commission for all the hard work that they put into this document. Respectfully request the commission remove measure G H G oh six that includes the point-of-sale mandate as it would put an undue burden on local homeowners and ultimately affect, uh, home affordability in our region. Measure G H G six, which introduces the point-of-sale mandate, disproportionately in, and actually does not achieve a goal that it will set to do in a reasonable amount of time. For example, in the unincorporated county to, uh, 2019, there was about 160,000 single-family homes and only 8,000 of those homes, uh, sold, which is a 5% turnover rate. At this rate, this will not provide greenhouse, uh, greenhouse gas reduction at the rate to reach the goal of the local targets. The cost of electrification re- uh, retrofits for a home above the median price costs the homeowner about 3% to 4% of the total home value. While for those that own a house, own a median-priced home in the Sacramento region, it would cost them to be at two to three times greater, it could be 11 to 14% of the home's total value. This cost burden that the climate sale mandate put on those trying to enter the market compared with the inequity we currently see in our local homeownership numbers. Now, we will not just sit here and complain. We do have a way to provide an example of what we can do to uh, do to make things better, one strategy that helps support all homeowners that, which would be start integrating these new technologies as their current appliance, reach the end of the life, uh, cycle is the requirement that does not only allow for the permanent install, all glass, all gas appliances after a specific date. This idea is much more effective for several reasons. One, it allows homeowners to plan out what will cost to make these upgrades and apply rights to incentives. It also provides homeowners sufficient time for a reasonable recovery on the appliance that they already own. And will give the supply chain and the workforce development more time to adjust and be responsive to the market. Uh, thank you for your time. We appreciate all the hard work that planning commission does, as well, I think, all the county staff. If there is anything the association can do to be a part of this conversation, please let us know. Thank you so much and have a great day.
Thank you, caller. Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting. You'll have two minutes to make your comment. Please proceed.
Hello, this is Leslie Cummings. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. Um, should I be speaking now?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay, um, thank you for your time. I am calling to sort of add my support to the comments made by Kent, a couple of speakers earlier, uh, that, that the present document has vague, unsubstantiated measures without specific timelines, program details or realistic goals. And I think it's worth developing those now, um, so that we can get going addressing this terrible, uh, ticking time bomb that we, that we have hanging over our heads. And, um, that kicks my remarks.
Thank you, caller. Please, has been the next caller. Hello caller, you're now, uh, you're now in the meeting. You'll have two minutes to make your comment and you can proceed.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Steve Literby, uh, Grand Park, uh, Project Manager. Achieving G H G emissions reductions is a critical global issue, and we commend county staff for the public participation that has resulted in development of the draft cap. However, we do have concerns about the current public input process. Our team has reviewed the draft cap and has provided two comment letters. At this time, we do not feel the comments provided have been addressed in a meaningful manner. We would appreciate staff completing an assessment of all comments received, providing responses to comments provided, revising the cap, buyers of the planning commission making a recommendation to the board supervisors. Uh, thank you for your time and thank you for all the good work.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting. You'll have two minutes to make your comment. Please proceed.
Thank you. Hi, um, my name is Anne Amato. I'm from Carmichael. And I want to urge you to support strategy two and oppose strategy four. Strategy four will result in higher greenhouse gas, gas, gas emissions. Community-wide carbon neutrality strategy two means the county takes steps to transition to carbon neutrality by 2030, and later dates for this implementation will be too late. So this 2030 date is really critical. The formation of the Climate Emergency Task Force is also critical to truly address all of our community's needs. I think it's really, really important to remember that investment now is ultimately best for our economy and our public health and well-being. This is especially so for our disadvantaged communities. And again, if we don't take action now, we'll simply be reacting to the effects of climate change, which will be much more costly. We are already suffering from pollution, wildfires, droughts and extreme weather. Um, please support strategy two for an equitable, sustainable and resilient economy, which is a must for our children and grandchildren to have a reasonable future. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Okay, please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting. You'll have two minutes to make your comment and you can proceed.
This is Barbara Leary, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Sacramento Sierra Club. We are concerned with the lack of a more thorough impact analysis, um, on environmental impact analysis. Uh, for this project, a supplemental plan would have been more appropriate in light of the great length of time that has elapsed since the E I R was done for the general plan. We do support incorporating and strengthening some of the strategy options in appendix F, which need further refinement, quantification of benefit and implementation measures. Measure F 1.1, the infill development focus should be included in the cap before it is adopted. The most important economic incentives needed to promote infill development and adoption and implementation of smart growth land use and transportation policies. The cap failure to include appropriate land use policies as a part of the cap amounts to a failure to incorporate the factors contributing to climate change over which the county has the most control. Measure F 1.2, community, community-wide carbon neutrality supports a more immediate transition to carbon neutrality consistent with the Climate Emergency Response Plan. It outlines many measures that must be taken, additional actions that must be considered in order to close the emissions gap to carbon neutral. The carbon, uh, the Climate Emergency Task Force needs to be established and to act on this immediately. A delayed process to implement these actions would not accomplish the goals of the Climate Emergency Response Plan. Measure F 1.3, carbon neutral new development demands a comprehensive analysis of proposed product, projects on G H D production and the loss of carbon sequestration value of impacted open space.
Please make your closing comment, caller.
Um, thank you. Would also like to note that the carbon farming measure lacks enforceability and, um, implementation, and the carbon credit plan lacks detail on local possibilities for implementation, which is critical. Thank you.
Thank you. Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting. You'll have two minutes to make your comment and you can get started now.
Thank you. My name is Jill Peterson. I am with the Sacramento Department of Climate Lobby. We submitted extensive comments as part of the public comment, um, process. Um, I'm not going to reiterate those comments other than as others have said, the cap industry is unacceptable. The question is, where do we go from here? I would like to request that the planning commission not adopt the resolution recommended in the meeting material. Instead, send the cap back. Direct at the cap to clarify so it is in compliance with the board of supervisors' climate emergency declaration. That declaration expressly stated that the cap would explain how you're going to reach carbon neutrality by 2030. That also said that county staff would evaluate the resources necessary to achieve carbon neutrality by 2030. It is not a job of the, um, Climate Emergency Mobilization Task Force to show how we get this carbon neutrality by 2030. The board of supervisors made it clear that that would be part of the cap. My question is, how can the planning commission or the board of supervisors make a meaningful decision without knowing how we might reach carbon neutrality by 2030 and what the options are and how much it would cost? They need that information. That the cap, we sent that, it complies with the emergency declaration and the planning commission and the board of supervisors have the information they need and which they requested in the emergency declaration to make the kinds of decisions that need to be made to address climate change. It is not something that they should have to do just based on what's in this cap. They need to know and they can make the decision of whether we can reach carbon equality or if the resources are appropriate, but it needs to go back and have that information included. Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting. If you could please turn down the meeting in the background and you'll have two minutes to make your comment.
Okay, I'm ready. Should I state my name now?
Um, that's fine. If you would like, sir, absolutely.
Okay, I'm, I'm ready whenever you are.
Oh, right. We're ready for you. Go ahead, please.
Okay. Yes, well, my name is Ralph Propper, and, uh, I just want to take note of the fact that we had our, uh, heaviest rainfall ever in a day in Sacramento history. And, uh, this is something that we might expect more of in the future. How do I know this? Well, uh, I'm recently retired from the Air Resources Sports Climate Science Research Section and from, uh, being a professor of chemistry at the University of California, Davis. Uh, so, uh, this is consistent with the modeling that will get, uh, more intense atmospheric rivers as well as, uh, less, uh, more, more droughts. That we are very lucky. We had this heavy rainfall after a drought. But we can't count on that in the future. Basically, the modeling that, uh, was 10 years ago that, uh, led to this, uh, climate action plan, uh, this plan 10 years ago is accurate, except it's happening much faster than we had, uh, predicted. Uh, so if that gives us greater urgency, we'll have flooding and droughts and other, uh, problems like the fires that we've been seeing. So what do we need to do? Well, uh, I should mention too that I'm now the president of the Environmental Council of Sacramento. Sacramento. Uh, we have about twenty member organizations to various concerns, but we all agree that we need much stronger climate action plan to deal with the problems ahead. I want to mention too that, uh, it would benefit this community economically to have a more aggressive plan. I was speaking to, uh, the people who are with the, uh, Sac State's California Mobility Center, they've gotten a lot of involvement by Silicon Valley of software companies and, uh, developing the hardware for increasingly automated vehicles will provide thousands of jobs. At the Air Resources Board, we always had estimate the cost of regulations for air quality before we put them into effect and almost always we found that it was cheaper after innovators found ways to do it cheaper and that led to California's economy doing really well, not just here but nationally as clean air standards were developed following California and around the world. We can expect the same thing in our Northern California mega region if we partner with the high-tech folks there. What do we, what do we need to do? We, we need more incentives for infill. We can't rely on, on a fee from sprawl development to provide incentives for infill. We need to, we need to have incentives for infill from the start. Fortunately, uh, Secog has gotten money from the state to incentivize greenfields, infill development, and we need more transit-oriented development along those lines.
Sir, if you could please make your closing comment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can you please send that, uh, the next caller? Hello caller, you're now in the meeting and, um, you'll have two minutes to make your comment.
Should we start now?
Yes ma'am, please.
Hi, my name is Monica Moore, I'm a constituent of Sacramento County. I am asking the Sacramento County Planning Committee to not accept the current Climate Action Plan, um, draft. It is unacceptable as far as meeting our climate crisis. It fails on several fronts. My key concern is that it's not an adequate planning tool because it does not specify reasonable goals, project program details, or timelines. I'd like to note that it does not seem to include agreements between necessary partners to carry out any such action plans. The increased climate crisis will continue if there is no specific asserted action taken, and that needs to include some way of curbing the greenhouse gas emissions. And that is something that I don't see in the current plan. I'm specifically interested in a carbon tax. Failure to take any true action that's specific and accountable for parties will continue to, will continue to feed the, the drought, forest fires, lots of wildlife, potential flooding, and more that will affect our economy and our health. I have asthma, I'm a grandparent, I care about our future, I hope you do too. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you caller. Can you please send the next caller? Hello caller, you're now in the meeting, we ask that you turn the meeting down in the background first off, and then you'll have two minutes to make your comment and you can get started right away.
Thank you. Good evening, and my name's Oscar Valiger, I'm with 350 Sacramento. New supplements are formal comments. The cap should be the county's plan to help manage climate change. Instead, it indulges land speculation, enables sprawl, and will increase GHD. How? Auto traffic is the county's main greenhouse gas source. Four big planned developments all outside the UPA to beyond the USD would increase traffic and GHD. These projects will not meet CEQA's threshold of fifteen percent reduction in traffic from new development. The cap will help these projects because its measures, without exception, are unsubstantiated, unfunded, infeasible, and/or unenforceable. Projects will easily meet these measures and need no further GHD review. Of course, such a cap cannot meet CEQA standards. So the cap avoids environmental review, saying it was due for the general plan update ten years before the cap existed, and ignoring a decade of change in climate, climate science, and law. And to what end? We don't need climate busting sprawl to meet our housing needs. The county has already approved and shall already twice the new development needed through 2040. With the four new sprawl projects, it will have approved a hundred and forty years' worth of future growth. It does nothing to meet real housing needs and it's the antithesis of responsible planning. The cap is meant to help fight climate change, not make it worse. Please send it back for rewrite and legitimate environmental review. Thank you so much commissioners.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting, you'll have two minutes to make your comment and you can get started right away.
All right, hello, this, uh, planning commissioners, my name is Chris Brown, I'm with the Sacramento Climate Coalition. I want to applaud the staff, uh, for responding to public comment by moving what you find in the plan as Appendix F, uh, which was something to be considered in the fu- future to Strategy Option Two, which I want to recommend that you all adopt tonight because it is the only one of the strategy options that responds directly to the county supervisor's Declaration of a Climate Emergency in December of last year. It also calls for the creation of the Climate Emergency Mobilization Task Force to carry forward the process of identifying specific measures. This is necessary because the challenge in front of us is, one, we've never faced as, uh, a human race. We've been told by scientists repeatedly that we need to get to zero greenhouse gas emissions as fast as possible to stop the destruction of civilization. We are on a roller coaster right now, moving back and forth between record-setting droughts, wildfires, and now floods, all in one year. We're going to see more of that as more and more heating of the climate occurs over the next years. It's absolutely important to understand that the cost of not doing something is much higher than the cost of taking positive action. Since that issue was raised in 2018, the cost of, uh, cleaning up after the campfire in Paradise was a hundred and eighty million, billion with a B dollars as compared to estimates for getting to zero that have been done by University of Berkeley of twelve to twenty billion dollars a year. Over ten years, that's slightly higher than the hundred and eighty billion dollars that was required to clean up after the campfire. Please do the right thing tonight and approve Strategy Option Two. Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting, you'll have two minutes to make your comment and you can get started. And ma'am, we'll need you to turn down the meeting in the background and please proceed with your comment.
Um, hello, my name is Jenny Volk Anderson, and I'm calling, I'm to ask that the Planning Commission reject the current draft Climate Action Plan and take advantage of this opportunity to create a Climate Action Plan with peace, one that will really help Sacramento to be on the trajectory to reach the essential goals of the Climate Emergency Declaration that they adopted last year. The current plan, as it spans, a lot of it is not enforceable and it's weak in other areas. A new environmental impact report should certainly be required. The draft cap relies on a decade-old EIR and in the past decade, there's been, our climate emergency has gotten much, much worse. Please, um, send this draft back for substantial revisions. The people of Sacramento are depending on you and we deserve a, a strong cap that will make a difference. Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting, you'll have two minutes to make your comment and please proceed.
Hello, my name is Sandhya Jettie, I'm a lifelong resident of Sacramento. I'm calling, the county climate action plan isn't strong enough and should be sent back for revision. There are many issues with the plan. Um, importantly, it failed to meet the requirements of the December 2020 Emergency Declaration. It has very vague, um, goals without timelines or details, um, and, and, um, more importantly, being adopted without improper process or a sufficient environmental review. There is a large coalition of local nonprofit groups, including 350 Sacramento, the Climate Reality Project, Sunrise Movement, and more, that have thoughtful recommendations on how the plan should be redrafted and encourage the county to take their suggestions and revise the plan accordingly. We need much bolder action to avoid the most dire consequences of climate change. Thank you.
And please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting, you'll have two minutes to make your comment and you can proceed.
Hi, um, my name is Elizabeth Barrett, I am a resident of Sacramento and a grandmother of Sacramento as well. Um, I really wanted to urge you to reject the plan as it is written. Uh, the plan is not nearly comprehensive enough and does not have the spirit of an emergency. It's more, um, as David Gemm expressed, it a wish list and very optimistic. And the Strategy Option Two is clearly the only way to go. I would like to send it back for, uh, quite extensive revision. And I'm very nervous, so thank you so much for your time. Bye.
Thank you caller. And please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're in the meeting, if you could please turn it down in the background and you have two minutes to make your comment.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Steve Wertz, I'm, um, a Sacramento resident for a long period of time and I work with various, volunteer with various groups, including the Climate Reality Project and, and obviously I'm not, um, a technical expert, but I've been, um, paying attention to 350 Sacramento, Citizens Climate Lobby, and the Sacramento Climate Coalition, and all of their, uh, critiques, I don't think have been addressed. Um, I think that we should reject as not adequate and not complete, uh, the current draft even with all the work that's gone into it and should be sent back for revisions. I'm concerned, um, also, and I'm not sure whether we should be adopting Strategy Two tonight or whether, uh, that should just become the driving force for the revisions, but either way, uh, Strategy Two with carbon neutrality as its central point is critical. And having the task force be formed and, um, strengthened with the community input is going to be critical. I'm also, no one has mentioned so far, not only that this does not meet the Emergency Declaration, but it doesn't have any plans for the continuing a plan past 2030, twenty, 2030. Um, and that's critical because we're probably, uh, at this rate not going to meet those goal, goals, and we better have a ongoing plan to meet that. So, um, that should be addressed there of how this will continue to play out over time. Um, in addition, I am concerned whether or not developers paying for part of the cap was part of the reason for why, um, this may not have been as strong as it should be. Uh, I hope they have not had special access or input that would, uh, distort this, um, plan. We're facing, as you all know, global warming is wreaking havoc on us as we speak now. And speaking of undue burden, people talk about the kind of balance we have to make to make the change now. The undue burden that people are facing from the wildfires and so on are all due to our lack of foresight and lack of proactive actions. So the undue burden has to be balanced with the reality of the undue burden we're already facing and will begin to face even more dramatically as this crisis goes on.
Sir, can you please wrap up your comments?
Sure, uh, please reject this well-intended version and, uh, go back for revisions before we go to the board. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're in the meeting and you will have two minutes to make your public comment.
Hi, this is Alex Belster, a member of Sunrise Movement Sacramento. After ninety minutes of listening to the old music, I miss the rains down in Africa. I'd like to talk about the rains down in Sacramento, the rainstorm this weekend, and also the wildfires that destroyed Grizzly Flats and Greenville, the brown skies. We're seeing this more extreme weather now. What are you doing as leaders to address this now? You know, we have several high schoolers in our group and they're concerned, what is their future going to be like? What are you doing for these kids of Sacramento County? Look where we are right now on BlueJeans.com. We know from COVID that things can change real fast. It's nice to declare a climate emergency, but how are you showing the people that this is an emergency and leading of the capital area of the state, leading the people to change now? The county is working on a huge southeast freeway project. Instead, is that your priority, new roads? Don't just make a climate plan, let's take action. What can we do now in this decade by 2030? You can't farm this away. As one citizen, Susan, stated in written comments, come on, just do the right thing before we all burn up or die of thirst. As Mary wrote, this plan is a farce. Our group and others found that this does not meet the requirements of the December Emergency Declaration. It does not preserve open land, which currently sequesters carbon. It has vague measures without timelines, program details, or goals. It will increase sprawl by streamlining the approval of development projects which comply with its weak terms, and it is being adopted through an improper process since no EIR review will be done on the plan, which relies on a ten-year-old EIR done during the 2010 General Plan Update when the draft cap did not exist. It fails to focus on land use issues like infill development and transportation, even though vehicle miles traveled is the largest source of greenhouse gases, and it allows sprawl to continue, which fails to address our need for affordable housing. I'll wrap up in memories of wildfire victims from Paradise and across California.
Thank you caller. Please send the next caller. And if you'll please bear with us, we're having, um, a slight technical issue, one moment please. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting and you'll have two minutes to make your public comment.
Thank you. Hello, as a young person, I want a strong cap for my future and the future of the next generation. The current cap presents vague, unsubstantiated measures without timelines, program details, or realistic goals. It will increase the sprawl because it will streamline the approval of development projects which comply with its weak terms. It also fails to meet the requirement of the December 2020 Emergency Declaration. It fails to focus on land use issues directly in the county's authority, especially emphasizing infill development and affordable housing over sprawl, which it must do since auto traffic is the largest source of GHD. It fails to preserve open land, which currently sequesters carbon, and is being adapted through improper processes without adequate environmental appeal because the county is relying on a ten-year-old IRI done before, long before the cap. Current cap drops because this is not a strong cap and it needs to be sent back for revision. Thank you.
Please send the next caller. And we apologize, we lost the last caller, but we have staff calling her back and we're going to pull someone else, the next caller on board, if you'll just bear with us please. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting, if you could please, uh, you'll have two minutes to make your comment and you can get started. And I'll need you to turn down the meeting in the back- And I'll need you to turn down the meeting in the background, please.
Yes, I don't actually have it on.
Okay, you can get started.
My name is Inga Olson. I appreciate this opportunity to briefly speak to you, our planning leaders in Sacramento County about this critical topic. First, I want to remind you that getting to carbon zero, or even net negative carbon zero by or before 2030, is not only doable, but will, in an existential sense, dramatically save lives and dollars. In this vein, I ask you to recommend option two to the board because it is based on the current, generally unpredicted scientific understanding of the increase in speed and scale of adverse climate impacts that are taking place right now. And it is our best shot at mitigating this accelerating catastrophe. That is why the emergency climate declaration was adopted by the Board of Supervisors. In view of the goal of option two, it makes sense to include parts of option one as well. That is, increasing the infill development fee, using those fees for outline grant programs, and amending the zoning code, but I would not limit the cap to future greenhouse gas analyses. I also believe that option three supports the goal of option two, and supports sending the cap to add a new greenhouse gas reduction measure that would require development projects to demonstrate net zero greenhouse gas emissions for both project construction and operation. Finally, I oppose option four because it is based on a false premise. The county staff relied on a previously certified EIR based on the premise that it was complete and adequate. This was not true. In fact, previously identified significant effects, which as a result of substantial new information, were not known at the time the EIR was certified, have been determined by the latest scientific data to have a more severe adverse impact than discussed in the prior EIR.
Yes ma'am, can you please make your closing comments, ma'am?
In order for the county staff to adhere under option four, that the cap would retain sequent streamlining, greenhouse gas reduction measures have to be moved to an appendix in case the greenhouse gas target is no longer being met, and additional reductions are necessary. This gamemanship, ultimately with the lives and economic viability of residents of Sacramento County, is unconscionable.
Can you please make your closing comments?
That was it.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting. You'll have two minutes to make your comment, and please proceed.
Thank you. My name is Delanca Platar, and I'm president of 350 Sacramento. I wanted to call today to ask for the planning commission to really look at what is happening with the environmental review of this plan. This environmental review is not adequate because it's based on outdated information. Secondly, the county approved a climate emergency declaration, which urges to reach climate neutrality by 2030, and this plan is not getting us there. So I urge the planning commission to not approve this plan as it stands, but send it back for deeper revisions, because this is an opportunity that we have as a county to think differently and to do things differently. And this plan looks like a lot of same old, same old, and this is the type of thinking that got us into this problem in the first place. We need to really focus on reducing our vehicle miles traveled by really investing in our transit corridors and our city cores, and focus on infill development in a real and tangible way, while focusing also on the needs of our most vulnerable communities, focusing on affordable housing. So I'd love to see more of those elements in this plan. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting. You'll have two minutes to make your comment, and please proceed.
Yes, thank you. This is Chris Norum with the North State Building Industry Association. We have 500 members in the region representing most of the development interests in the county. I'd like to start by just thanking Todd and his team for all the hard work they've done on this document and all the many months of outreach. I'm going to talk about three primary areas of some concern to us. One is that the county already is on track to meet its state standards, meeting the greenhouse gas. And so when we hear that there's going to be a fee of $1,000 or $2,500, the county already has some of the highest housing fees in the region. And the Board of Supervisors has already scheduled a meeting in December to discuss the array of fees and how it's affecting feasibility of housing. So we're concerned with the sort of the open-ended nature of that fee, and how it's not tied specifically to any particular action, and accountability measures that would need to be tied to those fees, as well as to make sure that it's not duplicative of the VMT standards that are coming down, that exist for the county and for our projects. We're trying to try to mitigate the VMT, and that's what this is really aimed at getting at. So we want to make sure those concerns are addressed. Second issue we have is on the all-electric component. Our concern is primarily feasibility, and that's been added as a criteria component to the mitigation measure. But for the identification of the board, that the all-electric components in the marketplace is about 3% to 4% of the market is all-electric at this point. So we have concerns about the ability of the supply chain to provide the necessary component parts if we were to go to a full-blown mandate. So we want to look very closely what those feasibility standards are, and make sure that we are in a position to actually execute this in the time that the county contemplates. You know, there's been some discussion that it's cheaper to do this, but I have yet to actually encounter a builder who would report that it actually is cheaper. We need the smudge incentives that they have to continue so that we can continue to ramp up the all-electric components as part of the marketplace. And lastly, I'll say the point of sale, the all-electric requirement on point of sale is something that we have some serious concerns about because it's going to require basically a whole improvement project before people can move on to other types of housing. And there could be some serious fly chain issues, or just the feasibility of getting a contractor in place to renovate some of those housing units before people could actually move out of their houses. And if they have, you know, situations where they have forced sales, such as, you know, a divorce, a job change, just, you know, there's a whole variety of ways that could be really an unworkable solution. And we would strongly encourage the county to look at incentives for converting the existing housing stock over to all-electric in a way that doesn't create undue hardship in the existing, in the chain of people moving into new housing. Thank you so much.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting. You'll have two minutes to make your comment.
Hi, this is Jennifer Wood, and I am a member of the Sacramento chapter of Citizens Climate Lobby. So I'm calling to support the comments submitted to reject this draft and request that it is revised to meet the requirements of the December 2020 emergency declaration, to add timelines, realistic goals, and to focus on increasing the reliance on infill development to reduce VMP, which is the largest share of greenhouse gases in Sacramento County, and also preserve more land for open space that's naturally sequestering carbon now. And I would especially like to comment on the reliance on carbon farming for 50% of the greenhouse gas reductions. As a fellow scientist, currently becoming certified as a technical service provider to help farmers implement carbon farming practices, an eight-year window to reduce this quantity of greenhouse gases is unrealistic. I do appreciate the county for finally initiating this effort, and I look forward to a revised draft that is more aggressive and faces the real dire climate emergency that we are facing. Thanks so much, Commissioners.
Please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting. You'll have two minutes to make your comment.
Thank you. This is Dr. William Pevek, representing Climate Health Now, a coalition of more than 500 California health professionals who are working to address climate change, which is the major public health challenge facing our patients. We would like to commend the county for developing this very comments. The questions made by two of the commissioners this evening and multiple of members of the public this evening about the lack of accountability and specifics in the implementation of this plan. We would recommend that the county return this document for further revision to put accountability into the plan and not simply public outreach, education, and voluntary collaborations. Thank you.
Please send the next caller. And hello caller, you're in the meeting. You'll have two minutes to make your comment.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Christine Bailey, and I'm a resident of Sacramento County and a member of the Unitarian Church and the Environmental Justice Community of West Darden Arcade. I'm also a grandma, and for our children and grandchildren, we need a strong cap. I urge you to send this one back for a proper environmental review instead of using a 10-year-old document for timelines and realistic goals, and for requirements to preserve open space that sequesters carbon, and a focus on infill and affordable housing. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
And please send the next caller. Caller, you're now in the meeting. You'll have two minutes to make your comment.
Thank you very much. This is Dr. Robert Rosenbaum. I'm also with Climate Health Now, a group of medical professionals concerned about the health effects of climate change. I want to add my voice to those who've said that we appreciate thought and care, which is going into this plan, but it's simply not specific enough, not aggressive enough. I also endorse strategy option two. One thing which strikes me in this plan is that there's been a repeated statement that we need ongoing assessment to see if we're reaching our goals, but the goals aren't specified. And I want to address specifically the dangers of extreme heat. And I don't see very much in this plan about mitigation and adaptation for extreme heat. It's hard to remember after this downpour, but the projections are that by 2030, we'll have more than a month of days over 100 degrees, and about two and a half weeks' worth of days over 104 degrees. This is an extreme hazard, and planting a few shade trees is just not going to cut it. We need, when this kind of heat occurs, there's tens of thousands of increases in emergency room visits, people with pre-existing conditions die. And in most years, extreme heat causes more deaths than floods and hurricanes and wildfires. So we need plans for shelters. We need plans, do not expect air conditioning to save you because there will be power outages. The last time we had a heat wave in California, we had 20 days in 2006 where the temperature was between 110 and 115. We can expect something like that within the next few years, so we need to plan now. I thank you very much for your consideration, but I do believe that we need to return this plan to get it more specific, and I would add a special plug for addressing the dangers of extreme heat. Thank you very much.
And please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're in the meeting now, and you'll have two minutes to make your comment.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Dr. Glay Osaba, and I'm a Sacramento resident for the last 33 years. And I'm truly concerned about the future we will leave for our children and other species. The UN has identified this as the last decade that we can prevent catastrophic climate change. I urge you to vote for strategy two and support the decision of the county supervisors to adopt the carbon zero plan by 2030. Strategy four should not be adopted as it has a goal of carbon neutrality date by 2045, representing business as usual, and a lack of realization that acting slowly will result in the loss of our world and the civilization as we know it. As an aside, strategies one and three would most likely have to be used as part of strategy two to achieve carbon zero by 2030. I also look forward to the initiation of the climate emergency mobilization task force within the 60 days mentioned. Thank you very much for your work.
And please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're in the meeting, and you have two minutes to make your comment.
Thank you very much. My name is Jim. I don't want to tread on the toes of the other experts who have already spoken about the specific dangers that Sacramento is going to face if we don't take adequate action on climate change. I do want to point out to the board that just last month, you passed a resolution reaffirming your commitment to rely on scientific facts and science experts in matters of public health. While that was directed at the COVID-19 pandemic, the same issues are going to crop up when we look to the future and towards a future that involves the levels of climate change that we can now reasonably expect. So I ask you to stand by those words and simply practice what you preached. I will also point out that the board received on the 8th of this month a letter from the Citizens Climate Lobby pointing out the inadequacies and the many legal issues with the current draft of the CAP. This and other feedback have clearly been disregarded and should not be. If passed in its current form, the CAP will face legal issues and may face legal challenges. This is not an idle supposition. In fact, there's a growing trend of legal challenges by citizens to counties, states, and even countries that drag their heels. So please pay attention, take a step back, reach out to some more experts, and reconsider. You have a lot of time and a lot of ability to do a lot of good for a lot of people and save lives. I ask that you do so. Thank you for your time and for your service. Goodbye.
And please send the next caller. Hello caller, you're now in the meeting, and you have two minutes to make your comment. Hello caller.
Hello.
Yes ma'am, you have two minutes to make your comment, and you can proceed.
Thank you. My name's Paula Sugarman, and I'm a concerned citizen of Sacramento County. The latest draft of this cap is not a serious effort for our county to address climate change. It reads more like a list of good intentions and hopeful outcomes. I urge you to reject this draft of the cap until the following oversights are corrected. Failure to meet the climate emergency with emergency strategies to reduce greenhouse gases. Failure to provide budget and specify funding sources, no money gets no results. Failure to produce meaningful reduction in miles driven in the county. Failure to limit urban sprawl that drives auto traffic. Failure to include enforceable requirements. Failure to establish metrics and monitoring to assess the level of success. I look forward to another draft which will accommodate these and have accountability and specifics of implementation in the climate action plan. Thank you.
And I believe this is the last caller. Can you please send the last call? Hello caller, you're now in the meeting. You have two minutes to make your public comment.
Hello.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Thomas Yates. And for all the extremely well-stated reasons that have come before, I would like Sacramento County to please reject the cap in its current state. I believe that one of the things that needs to happen is enormous amount of public outreach, public service announcements, billboards, electric signs on the freeway. We are in an emergency. And if the developers and other vested interests under construction companies or whoever would understand this better, and the general public would understand this better, it would be a lot easier for the county to do the right thing and treat this issue like the emergency it is. I think that it is crucial that we get the word out in a much, much bigger way. Thank you very much.
Okay, and that concludes your public comments. And we ask, I ask Commissioner Teteche if you would like for us to close the public comments. Do?
Yes, if there's no one else, we will close the public comments.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll go back to the commissioners then, as the public comment has ended and closed. Are there additional comments or questions at this time from the commissioners?
Hi, yes, this is Commissioner Wong. If you don't mind, I'd like to jump in unless anyone else has something, any other comments they'd like to make?
Please, Commissioner Wong.
So I have a number of concerns with the cap, many of which have been brought up by, you know, my fellow commissioners as well. many of which have been brought up by, you know, my fellow Commissioners as well as members of the public. If it's okay with you Chair, I think what I'd like to do is go through them one by one and then after each comment maybe give my fellow Commissioners or, you know, even staff an opportunity to respond or add to the comment if they like, is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay. Um, so first, it kind of has a general matter, I kind of feel that you know, this cap is a little bit of, or I can't help but question is if this cap is allowing us to rest on our laurels, so to speak. We heard a lot during the presentation that even without doing anything, we are on schedule to be below what CARB has recommended be our carbon dioxide emission rates. And you know, and so therefore, anything that is done by the cap is just kind of bonus points. But you know, I'd like to note that, you know, that carbon dioxide rate was set by the 2017 Scoping Plan, which is actually scheduled to be updated next year. And so, you know, what happens if that rate is changed? Then we have a cap that is now out of date with the most current CARB scoping plan. You know, additionally, you know, you know, so is it prudent to align to something that will be outdated as soon as next year? Additionally, you know, I want to note that, or while I think it's important for us to have a very strong cap is because you know, while climate change is definitely a global issue, it is not only a global issue, it is also a local one. And the amount of GHG emissions that we emit into the atmosphere does have a direct impact on our community's air quality. And so shouldn't we be striving to have the strongest cap possible in order to protect our communities? If, if any, does anyone have any, any Commissioners have anything that they would like to add on to that? Or would staff like to?
This is Todd Smith, I can respond to that if no other Commissioners would like to add on. To your point Commissioner Wong about the upcoming update to the Climate Change Scoping Plan by the state, yes, we are aware that that is coming. And we specifically called that out in the Climate Action Plan as an upcoming document that we will need to pay attention to because it could very well drive our scope and our efforts on the cap revision that we in the current draft cap, we're calling for a revision to address carbon neutrality when that update to the Climate Change Scoping Plan is actually published and adopted by the state, as well as any additional state guidance on carbon neutrality for local jurisdictions. Staff's position on this is to get something in terms of the cap adoption, get something adopted so that we can actually start to make meaningful reductions through a regulatory document like the Climate Action Plan. Because we've heard repeatedly through the process that not doing anything only puts us further behind the eight ball.
Thank you for your response, Todd. You know, and I think that I would like to respectfully disagree in that, you know, if the update's coming out next year, I don't see what the harm is in waiting to see what that looks like. And further, if the plan is to wait for that update to come out until we update our own plan and then I think according to the staff report, it indicated that the update of that plan would coincide with the update of the 2030 General Plan. I guess my next, my question would be, what exactly is the timing of the implementation of those updates? Are we going to be waiting until 2030 then to implement these additional, these additional, you know, climate or carbon curbing activities?
No, in fact, we, we can't wait to do any updates to the plans. A General Plan update that's comprehensive in nature would take multiple years. And that's why we have started that conversation already internally about scoping that and identifying the necessary budget for that effort. The Climate Action Plan update would likely take significant effort as well. But we know that it's very important not just to staff but to our communities. And so we have identified that as being completed prior to or concurrent with the initiation of the General Plan update. So the timeline would be before the General Plan update would be completed.
And I guess, I mean, I guess, I guess it's just hard to predict when that General Plan update will be completed. I would imagine it would be no later than 2030.
We certainly hope so.
Yeah, okay. Um, and so my next comment is, you know, on the adequacy of doing an addendum to the, or you know, having an addendum to the EIR that was certified back in 2011. You know, as was discussed by many of our, you know, many of the members of the public who called in. And I believe it was also, it was also a part of the presentation earlier. You know, SEQA guidelines maintain that a supplemental EIR or addendum is only appropriate when the previous EIR and, or when the previous EIR and if there are some changes or, and when, I'm sorry, when there's a previous EIR, when there are changes to those EIR and when none of those changes or revisions would result in significant new or substantially more severe environmental impacts. You know, I think I agree with many of our callers and feel that the world we live in now is much different than how the world existed in 2011 when the EIR was, when the General Plan EIR was certified. I mean, catastrophic events such as wildfire, you know, these catastrophic wildfires, you know, that we're seeing annually now and unfortunately have become a norm, were not the norm 10 years ago. And, you know, I think that those types of things should be considered as well as sort of the developments in science and the developments in policy. One of, you know, one of them being, you know, back in 2011, the focus was more on level of service when it came to sort of a GHG analysis. And now, you know, the legislature has been transitioning more to a do a VMT analysis. And so I'm not, I, I, I don't, I can't say that I agree with the conclusion that the cap is only containing minor revisions to the original General Plan and that an addendum was appropriate in this case. I welcome any comments from staff or the other Commissioners.
Commissioner Wong, this is Commissioner Borja. I, too, having worked with many SEQA-related projects and having testified with Senate EQ and Assembly Environmental Quality on behalf of a lot of streamlining efforts for SEQA, I do believe that you are correct, that your arguments do have merit, that the landscape that you mentioned post SB 743 has changed and that I am a little bit worried that we live in a litigious state and there are opportunities on this interpretation to be put into further litigation based on what you had shared. Thank you.
This is Todd Smith again, I'll weigh in on the VMT issue. The county has adopted significant thresholds pursuant to SB 743. They are, actually, they were adopted last year into our General Plan. And the Climate Action Plan includes a measure specifically related to VMT reductions and requires that projects achieve 15% reduction in VMT that's called for in our significant threshold. So it is in there. And I also want to, actually, I'll hold off on further responses at this time.
Okay, thank, thank you both. Thank you to both of you for your comments and for your clarification. You know, I just feel that the, the cap that we have before us is significantly, you know, it, it does prevent significantly new information than what was available back in 2011 when the General Plan EIR was done. And so therefore, I think that there could be, you know, that, that there, there could be an argument for a EIR, a full EIR review, a new EIR review rather than an addendum relying off of, you know, the EIR that was done 10 years ago. I'd like to kind of switch, well not, well, I guess it's related because it's also kind of related to VMT. Um, you know, I'm concerned that there is, and this was briefly brought up earlier, I'm concerned of, I'm concerned about the amount of focus that is placed on carbon farming instead of something like VMT. You know, as I forgot, I think it was Commissioner Roja who brought it up, but you know, we, the cap relies on carbon farming for almost half of the anticipated GHG reductions. But the implementation measures are, as we discussed earlier, are educational and voluntary. And especially based on some of the comment letters that were submitted, it doesn't seem as though the affected stakeholder group is even that interested in implementing the the measures. So if it's voluntary and the targeted stakeholder group is resistant, what is the likelihood that we're, that they're actually, well, I think the likelihood that they're actually going to implement it is low since they are opposed and so I think that could significantly affect the greenhouse gas reduction, what's the word, I'm sorry, the greenhouse gas reduction, reductions that we anticipate, I think it could significantly affect that, you know. On the other hand, you know, as pointed out earlier that VMT both on the, when it comes to the community emissions, but then also the governmental operations emissions, you know, that's some of the largest contributor to the greenhouse gas emissions, yet it doesn't seem like there's a whole lot done there because I mean, most of the focus is on carbon farming. So I just, I just, you know, would like to say for the record that I'm concerned that I think the focus seems to be a little bit misplaced and we need to focus more on infill and, you know, getting people driving less.
So Commissioner Wong, Todd Smith again, I do want to emphasize that the General Plan already includes a significant amount of policies related to infill and promoting infill, encouraging infill, transatlantic development and the like, which is why we did not tackle it in the context of the Climate Action Plan. Staff believes that the General Plan update is the best way to achieve additional infill prioritizations or other growth controls above and beyond what the board has already adopted via the General Plan Update Process in 2011. I also want to respond to some of the other comments that we heard related to open space preservation. The South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan is already in place. And the county has committed to that, to implementation of that plan, which is why we didn't feel the need as staff to repeat what's already been adopted in that plan as well. And then finally, a number of folks were mentioning extreme heat and other weather events, or not just weather but wildfire. The Adaptation Section of the Climate Action Plan includes a number of policies and measures related to all those things. I want to make sure folks are aware of that.
This is Commissioner Raythel, if I could ask another question about specifically the carbon farming. I'm looking at Appendix E and the assumptions that have gone into that. And I guess I'm curious, you know, some people have made comments about the fact that the county is going to be driving this carbon farming process with a video on their website or through whatever other means that aren't really outlined in the goals. Is it that the county is driving this process or the industry is difting in this way? And that these are calculations, don't know what we can expect from direction of agriculture in the next 10 years?
I'm going to need to defer to Dan for some background on that.
Sorry, I was looking for the right button. Sure, yeah, happy to provide some more insight on that measure. So the carbon farming, this measure, the quantification of it used a tool called Comet Planner. It's a, it's a tool that's used widely to estimate carbon dioxide reductions that can occur through a variety of different agricultural practices. So this, this concept of carbon farming has, has been around for a few years. It was even the subject of a, of a smud study that was done in 2017 looking at the potential for carbon sequestration specifically in Sacramento County, which found not just hundreds of thousands but potentially millions of metric tons of carbon dioxide that could be reduced through, through various practices. So actually, this, this number here, you know, it's, it's a large part of the, the measures, but in terms of the quantification size, but it is absolutely something that needs to be part of any plan that is moving towards carbon neutrality. And it, these practices here, these are involving different applications of fertilizers using compost rather than synthetic fertilizers, tilling practices, these are, these are all demonstrated to, to help with carbon dioxide sequestration. So the measure is set up to, to help get this information in, in front of farmers that could implement this. You know, it's, in a few years, there's been a lot of research done on this. There's tools available to help quantify those benefits now. And so the, the initial part of this measure is to get this in front of parties that could implement these measures. And then eventually, this could even be scaled up through updates to the, the Climate Action Plan in the future, meeting larger goals, more acreage where this could be applied. There, there is the potential for this to actually grow in terms of the carbon dioxide production benefits. So I hope that helped answer some of the question about the quantification and the intent of, you know, education on this measure in order to get it to scale up to help support carbon neutrality in the long term.
Thanks Dan, and I would also add that as staff, we have seen a couple of interested parties, some ag property owners who are interested in doing application of compost on agricultural lands in the county as well as a potential injection carbon sequestration project at a large scale. And so I don't disagree with anything Dan just said. It does need to be a part of the Climate Action Plan. In fact, one of our commenters had some pretty extensive comments related to implementation of this measure and staff had reached out to this individual and discussed it with him. Uh, staff had reached out to this individual and discussed it with him. Uh, there are potentially some state funds uh that might be available uh to help incentivize this activity as well.
Any other comments from our commissioners? Or questions?
Yes, I.
Yep.
Sorry, full of questions tonight, um, comments and questions tonight, I should say. Uh, this is Commissioner Wong again. Um. Uh. Let's see here, um. I guess I, I'd, I'd like to talk a little bit about the. Point of sale. Concern in. Requiring, you know, when a. Person sells their home, they would be required to upgrade at least one of their, um. Yeah, they, they'd be, they'd be required to u- upgrade at least one of their appliances to um all electric and. You know, while I. Completely support the intent behind it. My concern is that it seems to ha- it seems that it would ha- I think it would have a disproportionate negative impact on our low income communities. Um, many of which are located in the district that I represent. Um, and. You know, not all. Individuals who are selling their home are going to have the means to upgrade. The equipment which can be expensive, um, you know, for, for some of the more, um, you know, affluent neighborhoods. You know, maybe. Purchasing a couple of thousand dollar whatever um isn't that big of a deal, but for some other neighborhoods, that is a lot of money and could be cost prohibitive. So that's, you know, what I'm worried about. And, you know, in, in the interest of full disclosure, um, you know, I did talk to, um, you know, one of the uh realtors. About this and, you know, ac- a- according to him, um, you know. Another concern I have with this part is that. You know, uh, on average, it seems that only five percent of homes um go up for sale each year. So if we're only seeing on average five percent, I mean. Yeah, if we're only seeing on average five percent of homes. Going on sale per year. I, I think it's going to take us a really long time to meet the goals that have been laid out by the cap to get a lot of the older homes. Updated if this is the path we're going to take.
This is Commissioner Rathal. I agree with Commissioner Wong um and in opposition to the point of sale mandate.
Uh, so this is Todd Smith again, um responding to. Both of those points. I think um. We had previously talked about the smud incentives for upgrading appliances. Uh, those are in table G three of the Climate Action Plan. Uh, but we do hear the, the concerns raised by a number of folks, uh, not the realtors and others about um unintended consequences of this. Um, and as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, um, we are looking at a couple of different ways to uh achieve. A similar uh meaningful result in terms of greenhouse gas reductions.
Thank, thank you, Todd. Um, and. I guess finally, um, or maybe not finally, because I thought of another question. But um, I'd like to talk more about the Board of Supervisors Carbon Neutrality Directive and. You know, while I, I, I understand, you know, uh, staff's perspective in that, like, in that, you know, it's, it's good to just get something on. Or, you know, get something implemented and started now because something is, you know, the perspective that something is better than nothing. Um, you know, I think that there were um some alternatives that you had provided in the cap that. Could have been a part uh or, oh, yeah, oh, there are alternative strategies that were provided in the cap. That could have been made a part of the cap. And so, um, you know, would just like to say for the record that I. Um. I guess I, I would have liked to see um a little bit more of a uh. Um, a harder go at it to try and meet the um. Uh, the Board of Supervisors uh Carbon Neutrality Directive.
So, so to that point, um. That's why we included them in the analysis. Uh, they're fully analyzed in the environmental review. And uh the planning commissioners have uh. Complete authority to recommend one of those options uh to be included in the Climate Action Plan. That is uh your role as the planning commissioners. Uh, and that can still happen as a result of the commission's direction tonight.
Hmm, okay. And um my. Final question for the evening until I think of another one is, um, you know, as the agency that is responsible for ensuring that our region meets the G H G emission reduction targets that are set by CARB. Has CACOG weighed in on this cap?
Uh, no, they have not. Um, we have had conversations with CACOG staff. Um, but I do think it's important to note that uh the nineteen percent reduction. Uh, target for CACOG's M T P S C S is solely from. Uh, light duty vehicles. It does not include anything related to, or anything related to greenhouse gas reductions from other sectors. So the county, the county's climate action plan is a much broader uh and far reaching document.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And I think that wraps it up for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Wong. Um, any other commissioners have comments or questions?
This is Commissioner Rathal. I've got a couple.
Okay.
Yeah, I think um on G H G five, the electrification of commercial and non residential buildings and facilities. Um, I know we have a. Planned timeline in there for exemptions. For cooking, manufacturing, uh, medical, affordable housing. Um, and industrial. Oh, and I, I guess I, I'm looking at it from. You know, if we, if we put these exemption in place, there is some. Um, industrial and manufacturing that just would no longer be feasible in the county. Um, and so, you know, I'd like to recommend we look at exemptions that are either permanent um for these. Um, or significantly delayed until we have technology um that can get there. And I also am concerned about the impact on affordable housing because I, because I don't think um. That right now, an all electric installation. Um, it doesn't add to the cost of an affordable housing unit. Um, so I guess I'm curious to see what the other commissioners feel. And, and that are we, are we. Going to kick out some. Manufacturing industrial and ship that to um other places that are not in the county because that's really what we're going to do is we're just going to shift that industry elsewhere. We're not going to solve. The greenhouse gas emissions um with a policy like this.
Uh, Commissioner Rathal, Todd Smith here. I want to clarify what I think you said, but I'm not sure. So. Uh, on that measure, G H G O five. Um, there are some exemptions. Let's see, on page twelve. That can be extended um after July first, twenty twenty five. Um, so if the Board of Supervisors may consider extending the limited exemption until. The technology is feasible and available. Um, I want to make sure. That that was clear.
Yeah, that's clear. Are we going to go back? Are we going to evaluate that on an, at that time?
We would have to.
Okay.
Yeah, what, and, and so, so background on this, what we heard through this process from the manufacturers of this, of the equipment. HVAC, uh, water heaters, um. That type of stuff. Is that uh they need some, a couple of years to ramp up production in, in order to meet the anticipated demand. And so that's why that year, um, twenty twenty five uh is in there. Um. But then we are. Not certain after that. Uh, obviously, we'll be in close communication with the manufacturing industry to make sure that. Uh, that year is still valid. And, and so if it's not, uh, that's why we have that exemption. Or the opportunity for the board to extend that exemption until that technology is feasible and available.
Got it. Thank you, Todd. That's much more clear. Uh, my other question was on G H G twenty two. Um, just want to applaud uh this idea of, of connecting key destinations. I think it makes a lot of sense. Um, and I appreciate um the staff responding to the um Sierra Club comments about adding in the timeline on there. I'm not sure if other folks have made that comment, but I, I, I do applaud this because it's definitely something we look at constantly. Um, on planning commissions is, is access between. Residential development um and a place to shop and, and send the kids to school. So. Um, I definitely did want to applaud that, but I was curious how it would be applied or if we know it yet. Um, it says like a quarter mile for walking and a half mile for biking. I've lived in urban developments before. And I can say I was definitely comfortable walking more than a quarter mile or biking more than a half a mile. So I was just curious. How do we, how do we bring that into the, the analysis? Um, or is that something we're waiting to find out at a later date?
Sure, excuse me. So staff hasn't developed this program yet, but uh kind of the bones of it are, are there in the measure. Um, if there's feedback on those uh distances, quarter mile, half mile, what have you. Um. That's good to hear.
Yeah, I think in general, uh, you could go a little further out, but I think, you know, that definitely you could have a higher score for being closer. That's obviously better. So I just wanted to applaud that one specifically because I do feel like it's a. The more we can get folks to walk or bike. Um, to their services, uh, the better off we'll, we'll be. So from a greenhouse gas standpoint.
Hi, and this is um Commissioner Wong, and I would like to echo the comments of um Commissioner Rathal in commending staff on. Uh, this particular measure. I think it's a good one.
Yeah, I think the last thing for me is, is just weighing in on um the strategy option uh guidance. Um, option four, um, I guess I'm. I'm not real clear. Um, there was a comment made in there about retaining the sequel streamlining um and with option four being the best option for that. I was wondering if, if Todd, if you could comment a little bit more on i- is this the kind of legal defense or, or why is this the most? The option that would be most likely to retain the sequестreamlining?
Um. You have a place where you're seeing that?
Uh, my notes from, my extensive notes from reading a lot of things, but let me uh.
Okay.
For you.
Uh, so, so option four was the. Um, strategy option that would be focused on adaptation only. Uh, there would be no additional um greenhouse gas reduction measures, so I'm not sure that um. That that was, would be something that staff would say would best meet the sequel streamlining needs. That we're trying to achieve for the cap.
Sounds good. We can carry on. I will, uh, I will look and see where my notes came from and I'll chime back in um if I can find that specific. Text.
All right, um, Commissioner Borha, do you have any other comments or questions?
Um, more, thank you, sir. Uh, more so just procedural. Um, and you may have already um mentioned this earlier at your presentation, Mr. Smith, but. What are the next steps um for this? If we go one way or the other? Thank you.
Sure. So procedurally, uh, if the commission wants to recommend approval of either the proposed cap. Or any of the four strategy options, um. All four of those plus the proposed cap have been evaluated. Uh, in the uh materials in front of you. Uh, if you want to. Select one of those uh and recommend it. Then we can go about the necessary steps to incorporating whichever option is selected. Uh, and then um. The revisions that we identified in the staff report addendum. If you want to do something other than that, uh, we would need to uh. Hear what that is and then go through a process to incorporate the planning commission's recommendation into the materials. Uh, as well as any uh review of the environmental document approach, uh, if that continues to be a concern.
Question on that. If, if the planning commission is not able to come to uh a recommendation to push forward. What is the process? Is it no recommendation and it goes to the board or does it go somewhere else?
So I may need to ask counsel to weigh in here, but uh if there's no recommendation, uh, then I think that would be a problem. Um. We would want to hear what the decision makers uh here, in this case, the planning commission. Uh, have to say, uh, that's one of the reasons for the public hearing tonight is to get a recommendation. Uh, from the planning commission. Uh, without that, I'm not sure that we can move forward to the board.
This is Bill Burke, Deputy County Counsel. If there's a. If it's, if it's a two-two vote, I think there's, we have four or five commissioners here at this point.
Four tonight.
Or if it's two-two, there's no action and there's no recommendation and it would go to the board. The staff can still take individualized comments. But there's no formal recommendation without prevotes, one way or the other.
But it still advances to the board whether or not this body tonight supports it or doesn't support it.
Correct.
So I'll ask my fellow commissioners, is there um, is there a desired direction that anyone would be interested in moving tonight?
This is uh Commissioner Rathal. I'll, I'll kick it off. Uh, I. Recognize that staff has put in a lot of time to this. Um, I also recognize. That there's no way to make everyone happy with a large policy document like this. Um, I know any one of us could point to what a number of deficiencies that we would see from our own perspective um with it. But I also understand the idea of having a policy. Um, in place that. Supposed to be in place ten years ago to where um we start efforts. And, or continue efforts and we have some direction in order to do those. Um, and I think to me, the important part of this is, is the quantification. Um, and so we start the process of quantifying and improving our projections every couple of years. Uh, so my preference would be to recommend. Um, that we do move the cap forward um for approval to the board with some suggestions on how to approve it, improve it.
You have any thoughts on the alternatives that were put forward?
I struggle with option number one. I actually struggle with G H G twenty three entirely. Um. We're proposing a fee which we don't know what we're going to spend it on. Um, and we have no, uh, even estimate, we have, we have estimates all over this document. Um, using the best science that we can. Um, but this, this measure has no, we don't know what a thousand dollars per house is or twenty five hundred dollars per house. So I, I struggle with. Um, with, with that. Um. Alternative. And I also, uh, option number two. Oh. I understand the desire for this. Um, but I think the board, I understand they passed the emergency resolution. They've also passed um. A number of other resolutions. Um, and so I don't think it's as clean cut to say that this is the direction they're going to go. I, I'd be open to leaving the board open to that. I don't feel like. We need to recommend strategy option number two. Um, strategy option and number four doesn't seem like enough um to me. Oh. And I don't think it really makes a whole lot of sense. Um, strategy option four, and I'll, I'll end with strategy option number three. Carbon neutral new development. Um, I understand where this comes from. Oh, and you know, I could. And, you know, I could, I guess I'm not sure. I'd have to understand more of the full analysis in order to recommend this tonight because I get that, you know, I think that would, I kind of neutral on this. So it does make sense to have carbon neutral new development. And I guess I'd need to know a little more background about the two projects that are currently proposed outside of the urban services boundary. We need to discuss those in more detail on, you know, what stages they're at and whether we could even require this at that point. Sorry, that was a long answer to your question, but that's where I'm at.
Any other commissioner, Commissioner Wong?
Oh, yes. Hi, this is Commissioner Wong. You know, I think let's see, how do I, I think that even recommend the adoption of any of the four strategies that were recommended by the cap. I don't think that necessarily addresses the addendum concern that I had brought up earlier. So but notwithstanding that and just focusing purely on the strategies, you know, I think that I would, you know, I, I think that I would be supportive of option number one, the infill development focus strategy. On the, for option number two, to be honest, while similar to my, I guess, my concern of my, my concern of the, the point of sale concerns that I brought up before. You know, I don't, I, I don't know how I feel about some of the things that were listed in section two and, you know, I would need more time to digest on how that would affect some of our low income communities. So I guess I'm kind of neutral on strategy number two, the community wide carbon neutrality. Like while, while I think that, you know, we definitely need to work towards, you know, or we need to achieve the Board of Supervisors directive of carbon neutrality by 2030. You know, I want to make sure that, you know, we're keeping all of the constituents and all of the residents of Sack County in mind and how it would affect them. For carbon neutral new development, you know, I think I would be supportive of this. And for the, for strategy number four, the adaptation focused cap. I don't remember my exact thoughts on it, but I remember not being a fan. So I would not be supportive of strategy number four at this point. But notwithstanding my comments on the different strategies that were offered and whether or not we attach those to this cap. Like I said before, it does not solve my concerns of the, whether or not an addendum was appropriate for the environmental review document.
Commissioner Borja, do you have thoughts or?
Thank, thank you, Chair Chatteishi. I too share the concerns with my other fellow commissioners. First and foremost, the fees, the infill development. It is, it is a little alarming because we, we do not kind of see the quantification argument by Commissioner Rathal as far as how that would be used and how that would potentially impact. And that's, and Commissioner Wong's correct that it could have a adverse impact to our lower income communities as well as some of the folks that I represent in, in District Five. I do think that a strategy option two remains to be one of the more viable options that we can at least take measurable steps in, in environmental and sustainability goals for the county. But, but there is some some challenges in some of our more rural communities in making sure that we have voices from our folks over at the Delta that are disproportionately impacted, not by carbon sequestration, for example, but with like water issues. And so how would these types of work that the emergency task force hopefully consider? So that that's kind of a little bit of a twofer and option three, again, with the new, with the new development, I think that it would perhaps create some sort of entrance to barrier to some other families who are already being pinched by large housing costs. If they were to shoulder kind of the existing responsibilities of more established communities, whether that would be additional Melrose or additional, you know, some sort of fees that would be tacked on as a metric for future homeowners. I'm a little concerned with that as far as like equity standpoint and, and I share concerns with option four. I think it is having a tough time of just connecting the dots with the county's adopted mitigation described. So that, that, that's my two cents. There, that's issue. Thank you.
I appreciate all of the comments. I'll weigh in as I've been trying to be quiet and listen. I will say that option four in my mind is not, or strategy four is really not the one that I would necessarily look at as going far enough into really trying to make impact around this important issue. I have, I have reservations around strategy two just in its application and some of the areas there that, that I don't feel comfortable with quite yet and in fully recognizing how they will come to life. I, I share the concerns around affordability on three. And one, I think there are some opportunities around, and so I would be open to having conversations around strategy one. I do think that overall, and I guess we don't have to as a body necessarily recommend a strategy at tonight's meeting. If, if we were to move forward, we could just move forward with the plan, I guess, as it's been put forward. And so I, I do believe at this point, though, it makes sense that we need to move on something or at least try to move on something. I just, I'm not sure based on the comments tonight, if we have the ability honestly to, to have a recommendation. But I would be, I would be willing to support advancing the plan as is probably without one of the strategies as recommendation as an easier vote for me. But that's where I would be tonight if we were to go forward. So there, of course, is always the option if we can't come to any sort of majority, three vote to, to have it continue onto the board without a recommendation from this. From what it sounds like from county council, we're not stopping the process one way or the other. So the question is, is do we want to change anything in the document tonight? Do we want to, you know, put forward a completely different conversation as, as a commission to advise the board in this sense? Or do we want to try to see if there's something that the commission would support on a three vote or four vote potential? I'd yield back to all of you if there's anyone who is comfortable making a motion in regards to this document, one way or another, or revising it even as we look forward.
Well, I'll throw it out there. So we get a vote one way or the other. I'll move to recommend the adoption of the climate action plan to the Board of Supervisors.
As, as presented by staff or with any strategies attached?
As presented by staff.
I'll second the motion just to put it out there so we can move forward with more conversation and or a vote. I guess we would have a vote at that point. Is there any discussion around the motion and second? All right. Hearing none, then I'll ask the clerk to, to call the vote.
Yes, Commissioners Borja, Borja? Commissioner Borja?
Sir, the, the motion is to move the item as is without any strategies. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. That's what's on the table.
I would be a no at this point. Thank you.
Rathal?
Yes.
Chatteishi?
Yes.
And finally, Commissioner Wong?
No.
And the motion fails.
Are there any other motions that any other commissioners would like to put forward for consideration?
This is Commissioner Borja, Chair Chatteishi. I would like to put forward a motion to pass with strategy option two.
Okay, so point of procedure, sorry, this is Bill Burke. Sorry to interrupt. Point of procedure, you'll need a motion to reconsider first as a first step to bring the action back before you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reconsider.
Second Commissioner Rathal, second.
Any discussion? Please call the, the roll.
Yes, Commissioners Borja?
Yes.
And I apologize, Rathal?
Yes.
Chatteishi?
Yes.
And Wong?
No.
And the motion passes.
So the motion to reconsider has moved forward. Are there additional notions then on this item that we would like to hear or be put forward?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is Commissioner Wong. I thought we were, I didn't realize we were voting on a motion to reconsider. My vote for a motion to reconsider would be yes. Because it's, right, sorry.
It passed.
Oh, yeah.
I wasn't sure if Matt, if you needed a, needed an accurate vote for the record or not.
Okay, thank you. And the motion does pass unanimously with Commissioner Martinson absent.
Okay. So that has passed. Are there motions on item number two?
Chair, this is Commissioner Borja. I would like to move with a motion to approve the plan with strategy option two, community wide carbon neutrality.
There a second?
And the motion fails. For lack of a second.
So councillor, county council, what are our options at this point?
Well, you're, you're pretty much at square one again. Anyone can make a motion. You can. I mean, you've tried to move the plan as is. You can propose some variation of the plan. I, you know, I don't know if there's going to be any version of it that's going to satisfy, you know, three of you at a minimum. If, if you don't want to try to craft a motion at this point, or someone can make a motion to not recommend the plan, there's that. Or you could just decide to offer staff your, your individual comments on it and they can just take that to the board. It'll have less weight, I would think, than a formalized successful motion from the planning commission, but I think staff would be, think they would do that for you.
So are, to the commissioners, is there any option that someone would like to put forward in regards to that?
One more option, sorry, is to continue the item and maybe you have five commissioners at the next meeting. Can do that.
With, with that, with that, I guess, I guess the question is, is with that delay then that's going to the Board of Supervisors? Or can that bill, you know, bypass us in that sense?
Todd, what's the schedule for the board?
We do not have a scheduled date for the board yet. And so if you were to continue this item until a date when there were five commissioners present, we can certainly do that. Staff can work to address some of the concerns we heard tonight as well as whatever additional comments the fifth commissioner may have. But to your, to your basic question, Commissioner Chatteishi, yes, it would result in a delay, but we don't have a definitive date for the board yet.
Is there a will to continue the item until we have five commissioners?
This is Commissioner Wong. I'm neutral on the matter.
It looks as if, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Rathal. I don't know that continuing the matter addresses the concerns that are out there. Yes, it would get us an extra vote. And it would break the tie, but I don't know if it necessarily informs the board anymore on their decision. Because the, the items we're talking about aren't going to be, aren't going to be resolved in a matter of two weeks.
Is there a motion, is anyone willing, wanting, I should say, to make a motion to not recommend advancing this as the statement to the board? Okay, it sounds as if we will not be making a recommendation.
Can I, can I have one more stab at it before we carry on? Just as far as option number three goes?
You can.
Or, or maybe we could address Commissioner Wong and Commissioner Borja's. Is there any combination of the options that would address the EIR concerns? Or I'm just trying to think of, of how, Commissioner Wong, is there an option that addresses those, the EIR concerns?
I don't think so. Sorry.
That's okay. I'm just asking point blank because I want to, I want to understand where you're at and it's tough to read over a phone call, basically.
Yeah, no, I, I think, you know, as I've stated before, I think that a a full environmental review is appropriate in this case and unless that's one of the options, but I don't know if my fellow commissioners would also agree to that. So we, we might be at a standstill on that.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my hesitation with it is, is then we kind of kick ourselves into the next timeline anyway. These timelines are very, very long and by the time we were done with the full EIR, we would be into the next general plan. And so we would be, we would be starting over with a new process again. So that's, that's my only concern with it is timeline. But I understand your concerns and your point.
So it sounds like at this point, forgiving. If, if there is, if there is, it doesn't sound like we're going to have a motion then tonight or a recommendation. So at this point, if there isn't any other motions to be heard, we will I guess we'll, we'll close the item at this point with no recommendation from the planning commission and direct commissioners to inform their thoughts to staff.
Well, this is Bill Burke. If, if staff has enough input at this point to go from here, you can ask them if they thought they have enough or if they need to get any more commentary on the record. But yeah, whatever comments you're going to make individually should be done now in the context of this, this hearing.
Okay. I mean, do the commissioners feel that they have voiced their concerns adequately at this time and does, do staff recommend, do staff feel that they have heard the concerns?
This is Todd Smith speaking for staff. I believe we have heard the commissioners' concerns, but if there's anything else that you have not communicated to staff, we're certainly interested to hear that.
Todd, putting my, my engineering hat on, is, is there a reason we use a specific number for each measure of greenhouse gas reductions? I'm a, I'm a big fan of ranges when we have a lot of uncertainty.
I think that was an output of, of the modeling work that Ascent has done, but we can take that into consideration.
Yeah, that's me. Yeah, that's me, and, and having everything quantified, or maybe labeling it as, as too small to quantify. If that's what we're trying to say, because quant, not quantified to me means it could be really small, or we haven't done the work on it, and those are two very different things. Maybe an estimate of when we could get a number in there? That, that would, that would make it more clear to me from a, if this is a quantitative exercise.
Understood.
Any other comments from the Commission? All right, we will close item number two, then having taken no position, or taken no action, I should say. All right, well, the quick call, item number three.
Thank you for your patience, item number three is the Housing Trust Fund Fee Update Workshop. And the environmental document is that it's, there's no environmental document, it's not applicable.
Good evening Commissioners, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Leanne Mueller, I'm a senior planner with Planning and Environmental Review. I also wanted to let you know that Leanne Moffett is here tonight for this item, as is our consultant with Kaiser Marston, David Dozema. And also, we have with us tonight Christine Weicher with SHRA, who actually implements a lot of our housing, affordable housing for the county. So, I wanted to let you know that this is a workshop item, so we are asking the Planning Commission to provide us with feedback on this, and we're also giving the Planning Commission the opportunity to review the proposed Housing Trust Fund update. Given the fact that we had discussed this when we were actually going through our housing element update, and so we just wanted to provide the Planning Commission with that opportunity and let them know that we are going forward with the work that we had indicated we would do as part of the housing element. Can I please get the slideshow, please? Next slide, please. So, I wanted to basically let you know that this is an update for our Housing Trust Fund fee, which is the fee that we charge on commercial developments to fund affordable housing. There is a need for affordable housing in the region, the current standard of housing affordability indicates that households that spend 30% or more of their gross income on housing are considered cost burdened. And then severe overpayment occurs when households spend 50% or more of their gross income on housing. The impact of high housing costs disproportionately affects extremely low, very low, and low-income households. Based on these standards, market rate housing is not affordable for households under 80% of the median income. 73% of renters and 60% of homeowners earning under 80% of that median are overpaying for housing. And as part of our housing element and the county regional housing needs allocation, we were allocated 11,000 affordable units to kind of the moderate through very low income, so this is a critical piece of our funding for those units. The other thing is that, again, this is the fee for affordable housing on non-residential construction. It's intended to provide the gap funding to provide affordable housing. This fee was established in 1990, and the last update to the fee was in 1992, so we're looking at approximately 29 to 30 years there. And this was an item which we had indicated we would do as part of the analysis impediments to fair housing voice that we did submit to HUD. Next slide, please. So, what you're looking at in this slide is how this fee is actually set up to work, so it is a one-time fee that is paid at building permit. It applies to the development of new non-residential buildings, so we're talking about hotels, warehouses, retail, and office buildings in the unincorporated areas of Sacramento County. This fund is deposited into the Housing Trust Fund, which is managed by the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. Since 1990, this has helped to fund approximately 3,000 affordable units. Next slide, please. So, Sacramento County is not alone in utilizing the Housing Trust Fund to facilitate affordable housing, there are approximately 50 similar programs in California, especially within the Sacramento region, but these, these tend to be in the Sacramento region, the Bay Area, and some of the coastal areas of California. Next slide, please. We wanted to show you what the current fees that we are collecting on developments are, and please note that these fees were last updated in 1992. So, they range from the low end at warehouse at 26 cents per square foot, and our high is for office, which is 97 cents per square foot. When we did our ordinance, we did not put in an index for cost increase, so essentially those fees have stayed flat for approximately the last 29 years. Next slide, please. So, in order to support our fee update, the county did contract with Kaiser Marston Associates to prepare two studies that we're using as the basis. The first study was the Housing Trust Fund Nexus Analysis, and this addresses the legal requirement and establishes the maximum fees that the county can charge. Obviously, these are not the fees we are going to charge, but it does provide us that maximum level. The next is the Analysis Context and Recommendations Study, and that provides information to support the selection of the updated fee levels. So it includes things like a market context, fees as a percentage of the overall development costs, the affordable housing fee programs in the Sacramento area, and the comparison of the total fees and permit costs to other jurisdictions that are in our region that we would view as competitors for development, and it also includes an illustration of that fee had it been escalated for cost increases over time. Next slide, please. So, this slide is basically showing that the Nexus study has a purpose, which is to establish the maximum fee levels, and it also addresses the legal requirement to implement an impact fee per state law. Next slide, please. So, this is the Nexus concept, this is the concept between the fee that we're charging and new workplace buildings. So essentially, new workplace buildings mean a new jobs, a share of which are lower paying to the region, which can create new lower-income households, especially for those coming to the region for jobs, or new employees generally in the region. And then a new demand for affordable housing, which is what we're trying to address. So, basically, the Nexus study is the maximum fee levels based on the cost to provide needed affordable units to the workers that these non-residential developments would serve. Next slide, please. So, affordability gap, this is the difference between the cost of developing affordable units and the unit's value based on the restricted affordable rent. So basically, what we're trying to do is provide funding to address the gap between what it costs to develop affordable units and the rent that can be charged for those at the income levels that it's serving. So this Nexus study addresses three income levels, extremely low income, which is under 30% of the area median income, very low income, which is 30 to 50% of the area median income, and then low income, which is 50 to 80% of the area median income. Next slide, please. So, these are the Nexus study maximum fee findings. As you can see, they're significantly higher than what we had originally charged when the fees were adopted in 1990. You can see that they range from $16.40 per square foot for warehouse up to $47.60 for office. And again, I would point out, these are the ceiling on the potential fees, and staff's recommendation is considerably lower than the maximums that are in this Nexus study. Next slide, please. So this slide indicates the development that we've seen in the unincorporated urban county from approximately 2010 to 2019. And we looked at it for those fee categories that we typically charge, warehouse and industrial, retail, office, and hotels. For the county, warehouse and distribution is our largest category of non-residential development. We had nearly 5 million square feet just in 2020 and 2021. So, that is what we are seeing as far as the development within the county. Next slide, please. So, this represents basically the project types that we're looking at and that we've addressed, so we're looking at increases, and we looked at specifically fees associated with warehouse and distribution, industrial, retail, office, and hotel. And these are just kind of the represent, representative project types and representative development. Next slide, please. And this is essentially the total development cost estimates for each of the types that we have in the county. So what you're looking for is, you can see on the bottom, there's the land costs, there's the construction, indirect costs and financing, other governmental fees. And then you can see, it's a very small sliver, but the housing fee is on the top there. And for the county, retail is the most expensive to build, and warehousing and distribution is the least expensive to build. Next slide, please. So basically, this indicates what our fee levels are as a percentage of the total development cost for the types of development that we have. As you can see currently, the warehouse fee is about 0.19%, and office is currently the highest at 0.37%. And then you can see that we've started out, and you can see the percentage if we basically, for each of some dollar ranges, so you can see what would happen, what percentage it would be at like 50%, I mean, 50 cents, sorry, on up to $5, so that would give you an idea of the percentage of those total development fees or total development costs that the Housing Trust Fund could potentially be. Next slide, please. So essentially, this is how Sacramento County relates to other jurisdictions that we looked at for, for the types of development. For example, in the warehouse, you can see that for Metro Air Park, we're approximately $13, the same thing for Mather. And then you can see the cost for development in the city of Sacramento, Rancho Cordova, Outgrow, West Sacramento, and then Placer County. So we're higher than some, but we are lower than others. Next slide, please. Again, this is the same comparison, but for retail, and it holds true to, the same for warehouse, in that we are not as high as some, and then higher or comparable to some. Next slide, please. Again, this is a comparison for office, and you can look at these, and you can see that we have the housing fee on the top in gold, and the other jurisdictions that also have it on the top in gold as well. Next slide, please. Again, this is hotel, so you can see how we compare with our total fee package to other jurisdictions in the region for hotel. Next slide, please. So, this is another way of looking at the fee and the, and the fee packages, so the county of Sacramento, Rancho Cortova, and Citrus Heights are currently charging basically 26 cents for warehouse on up to 97 cents for office. You can look at this, and you can see the city of Sacramento's rates for those same five development types, city of Folsom, Outgrow, and then Placer County. Next slide, please. So, in this slide, we were wanting to show the Planning Commission how the fees would look if they had been indexed since 1992. So you can see, for example, warehouse would have been 64 cents, and office still would have been our highest at $2.39 per square foot. And those are the fees if they had been indexed, if that had been built into the ordinance when it was adopted in 1990. Next slide, please. So, this is our consultants' recommendation KMA based on their Nexus study, and then also the, the Analysis Context and Recommendations Report, so they would recommend that for warehouse and industrial, up to $2 per square foot. All of the other non-residential, up to $3 per square foot. And then they had recommended that we add an annual index to allow the fee to keep up with the increase in costs over time. Next slide, please. Okay, and this is county staff's recommendation. So, we would recommend that for office and hotel, the rate per square foot would be $3, research and development, $2, commercial, $2, manufacturing, $1, and then warehouse would be 70 cents. We would also strongly recommend that an annual index be added to these adopted fees, so that it would preclude us from having to be behind on collecting development fees, and then having to do new ordinances or going back to the Board of Supervisors every time we felt it was necessary to update the fees. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Is that, is that the last slide?
Yes, that's the last slide.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I thought there was one more.
That's okay.
So, that concludes staff's presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions we had. So that concludes staff's presentation and we'd be happy to answer any questions we had. And like I had said earlier, we have Leanne Moffett, who is our director here, as well as Christine Weicher with SHRA and then our consultant with KMA, David Dozema. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that. To be clear, this is a workshop item, so you were looking for feedback, no action tonight, correct?
That is correct. We are looking for feedback. So that if we have something we need to convey to the board, we can. And then also previously, when we had gone through the housing element, we had indicated that we were working on this item. So we wanted to give the planning commission the opportunity to see it as well.
And this is Leanne Moffett. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. One of the reasons we're doing this as a workshop in front of the planning commission is because this is actually an amendment to the county code. Typically, the planning commission has purview over the zoning code rather than the county code. This is really a board item. But because it was in the context of the housing element, your commission had previously seen the housing element. We thought it would be very helpful for the board to hear your thoughts, even though this is a county code amendment, which again typically doesn't go in front of the planning commission.
Thank you for that. All right, I'll open up to commissioners for thoughts or comments or even questions to staff. This is Commissioner Tatiishi. I have just a couple of questions or thoughts. I actually support for the most part indexing some of these just because you're right. Going, you know, twenty nine years without revisiting these items, it's not keeping up with costs. At the same time, I do think having no sunset on the index allows us to not revisit some of these fees. And it should be something that I think in my mind, the county would want to revisit, whether it's five years or ten years at least, just to kind of bring it back before them to do these types of analysis, look at their competitive advantage against other jurisdictions. Before it just continues in perpetuity to always go up. It may be worthy of bringing some sort of sunset into there so that there is a thought around it at some point in time.
Yeah, that's a good and interesting thought. Maybe we could tie it to the housing element timelines, just as one idea.
Right.
So every housing element, you sort of do a touch base as well.
I mean, the other thing that I would
Go ahead, sorry.
I was gonna, this is Leanne Mueller. The other thing I was going to point out is that SHRA does provide an annual report on the Housing Trust Fund to the Board of Supervisors. So I think also that would be an opportunity for a check in as well just to make sure that everything annually is, is as it should be. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. This is Commissioner Borah. You beat me to it. It would be nice to have included the SHRA annual report. Last time I checked this, the, the fees only built one expenditure for the year of twenty twenty and that was at Florin Mall Drive with maturity date that's not going to mature until twenty sixty two. And so what I would really like for future presentation in this workshop is not just the breakdown of the income report, but also the maturity of those loans. And have they all moved back or there, were there any provisions for loan loss on this fund? And how actively are we using interest income to ensure that we are maximizing the potential of these dollars and not just operating expenses for SHRA? I think that as Commissioner Tatiishi said, Chair Tatiishi said indexing is good, but also we have a responsibility to the public to show that the funds that are being collected are actually going towards projects that are creating, you know, potential housing opportunities for our county so that there is that synergy behind the fees that you have to pay as a developer versus the potential downstream public impact that you can have. I would be remiss if I don't bring up that, you know, just last month of September, SacB wrote about the SHRA grant program that is trying to improve diversity among Sacramento buyers, but it's not working. The WISH program has had seventeen applications and zero families have gone through. And so it would be very difficult as a commissioner to approve a fee increase if we are not able to show the public the report that says, look, these fees that we've been collecting since ninety two have matriculated into X amount of units. And these units that have existed in some of the more disproportionately disadvantaged areas have also yielded either X amount of housing or population density or the fact that these apartments are either being used right now or at least providing some sort of section eight housing. So all of these kind of community benefits on the fees that would, you know, create some sort of causality and some sort of argument to say that this is a positive impact would be good for me. So that's just my two cents, but thank you so much and I appreciate SHRA and the staff for presenting this item.
Christine, do you want to speak to the units that we have used these funds to produce?
Yes, Leanne, I was just about to say that. Thank you. So this is Christine Weicher from SHRA. I just want to assure the, the commission that SHRA receives about, uses about five percent of the fees at the most for administration fees. All the rest of the fees do go into multifamily development properties in the county of Sacramento. We do provide loans, I think, and I'm looking, I think we've created about six thousand units, I think, to date. But I can get back to you on that for sure. So they do, these are loans, so they are, they make payments to us. And sometimes it may be deferred for a period of time because they are affordable housing developments, but they are paid off at the very least at refinancing. So I think over time, we have seen, make sure I get the right. We've seen over ten million, almost eleven million dollars returned to SHRA in loan proceeds from this program. So again, they're multifamily loans, not to be confused. I do remember that article about the WISH program. That was not really, that was a program that SHRA was helping to get the word out on, but it was not our program. It was a federal home loan bank for, for home buyers program. But yes, we do get these out and I think they're creating many affordable units.
So this is Leanne Moffett, just to add, for those of you who may not have been around for the full housing element. We have two sources that planning aids with, which is the fee on residential development and then this fee on the non-residential. And at this point in time, we are collecting far more money in the residential component. And because this fee hasn't been indexed or updated since ninety two, this one is really lagging and not really contributing anywhere near as much money. So the burden is much more on the residential side right now and not the non-residential side.
Yeah, and this is Christine. Just one more thing to add. I misspoke. It's three thousand units, affordable units we've created. And thank you, because I just like, yeah, and I would say in most recent years, we collect between, you know, two hundred thousand, four hundred thousand dollars a year. And that doesn't create very many affordable housing units, unfortunately. With this fee, the other, the affordable housing fee collects much more, makes me more.
This is Commissioner Borah. Thank you for that. I really appreciate it. I didn't mean to make a connection about this program and the WISH program. I think, I think more information to the public is always useful, but I also want to ask a follow-up question. So this one, these, the CHTF funds are only specific to the, to low income. So this wouldn't be applicable to workforce, housing development, middle income housing, et cetera, or market price housing. So basically, we were, I don't want to say we're just limiting to section eight, but, but we're meeting to the HCD standard of the X percent to the median income. But those are the only house, those are the only apartments or residential buildings that could apply for this law.
Well, currently, we use most of the funds at fifty percent of area median income, which is definitely people in the workforce. So if you're making fifty percent of area median income, you may be, you know, a buster or you work, you know, work in retail, some sort of a restaurant, but you are working. Usually people making thirty percent or less of area median income are not necessarily, they may be receiving more subsidy, you know, SSI or things like that. But, but these funds are definitely workforce housing funds. We use them for workforce housing.
And I would add to what Christine is saying is that as part of this, we, because this initially, when it was implemented, was more to the very low income. I mean, and that's, that's also the title of it. But what we've tried to do is through our Nexus study is expand the income groups somewhat so that we're also looking at low income as well. So we have tried to expand on the income groups as part of this Nexus study as well.
Great. Do we have any other comments from the commissioners before we open up to public comment?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Rathal. I just, you know, with the mention of the, of the word Nexus, I guess I'm a little looking at this recommendation for commercial. I assume that includes the retail and likely medical side. And just kind of looking through the tables, that seems to be the highest concentration of, of lower income employees. And so I guess I'm just curious on, on how, you know, office is three dollars a square foot, but I look at commercial being two dollars a square foot. Because I would imagine we have many more of the lower income housing needs being generated by both the commercial and the warehouse component. And then looking at our development numbers, it doesn't look like we've had any office built in the last ten years anyway. So it would seem like this wouldn't have a big impact while we have had both commercial and warehouse being built.
I think if you're asking about methodology, I would defer, I would ask that David respond to that. So David, you're up.
But, but thank you, Leanne. This is David Dozema with Kaiser Marston. And, and you are correct that terms of acts that are addressed in the Nexus study where the demand for affordable housing is, there is a greater concentration of that demand for housing by retail and commercial uses as compared to office for warehouse, for example. And that's driven by payment density as well as the pay levels in those, in those uses. And that drives that higher finding. On the other hand, it is very common to have schedule that doesn't, doesn't follow you know, the, the precise intricacies of study findings to set those levels based on other considerations such as, such as were mentioned in the that address your question?
Yeah, and, and your recommendation was as to, I'm just looking at your recommendation, it was to increase retail up to three, right?
It was to take warehouse and industrial up to two and all other categories of
Yeah, and I guess that's, that's where I'm looking at your recommendation and looking at the county recommendation and it does tend to differ. I guess I don't see the justification for increasing office if we're not seeing, we're not seeing office development. I hate to add new fees to them and make them out of line with something like retail and commercial. So I'd prefer to see that office number down with the other commercial numbers. Unless there was some justification for increasing it, that's not, that I'm missing in the, in the presentation.
I think from the staff perspective, we were certainly trying not to go below where it would be if it were indexed. And so if, if it, office for street index, that would be two thirty nine a square feet. We did go up to three, but we certainly didn't want to go lower than the natural indexing that would occur. We felt that because there is such a housing crisis going on right now and there's, you know, such interest by the community and we think by the board, although we'll find out, to increase the gap funding, we were looking for areas and places to do that. The warehouse, we did not go as high as potentially we could have. We're just right above where it would be if it was indexed. There's a lot of warehouse activity in the county and we were trying not to stifle that. But those were some of our thoughts. But I think, you know, the reasons we're holding this workshop is so that we can hear your thoughts and we can forward those thoughts to the board. So I'm not trying to push back on your comments at all. I'm just trying to explain.
Totally appreciate that. Yeah, and I just wanted to give you mine, that I'd like to see them more, more aligned with the direct need for affordable workplace housing.
Great. Any other commissioner thoughts before we open to the public? All right, if you want to open for public comment?
All righty, please send the first caller, please. Hello caller, you're in the meeting and you'll have two minutes to make your, your public comment.
Hi, this is Chris Moore. I'm with the North State BIA. Thank you for having me again and thanks to Leanne, both Leanne's for all their work on this and the consultant for their, their detailed analysis. I just want to make a couple of quick points and, and just, you know, our association actually has members who build a variety of different types of things, not just residential. So, you know, I think the county should consider the fact that, you know, when you look at the housing data that's actually being produced, there's a great deal of moderate income affordable housing that actually is being produced currently. I will just also add, in no particular order, a few other comments. And that in the analysis, I think it assumes that if there's a certain level of income that workers are achieving, that they then therefore meet the classification of needing affordable housing. And my least, my first reading of it, it doesn't factor in who is actually looking for housing. In other words, if you have someone, a kid who's working, who's sixteen years old, working a retail job and not making very much money, does the analysis actually factor in that they may not actually be looking for housing because they're living at home? And that's an honest question back to the consultant. I would also mention that, you know, I want to applaud the fact that if the analysis looked at the surrounding jurisdiction as well as some similar jurisdictions throughout the state, but it concludes that the current fees are actually, you know, in the right ballpark. And our concern is that if you adjust it too much, you might risk driving jobs and investment to other jurisdictions where it's actually cheaper right now. Currently, we have, the state is taking a lot of actions on this affordable housing front and there's going to be a lot more money continuing to be flowing to local governments soon. So I think that this board should be wise to consider that there's a variety of other funds that are being implemented right now. And, you know, that basically attacked on retail and they're just struggling right now. Maybe something that merits some additional serious discussion. Lastly, I'll mention that, you know, the BIA is actually working closely with the county and the state cause of the Greenings Go initiative to rehab commercial corridors. And I think that, you know, the county should be careful about how it's going to increase costs on commercial development or some of these places where there's actually commercial corridors where you're actually specifically trying to incentivize investments. So it may be worth looking at closely to see if you're not, you know, creating adverse economics for the areas that you want to incentivize. And that's my comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And that concludes your public commenters.
Any other thoughts to give to staff for this workshop before we close the workshop? All right, hearing none, we will close the workshop. Thank you for your comments and thank you for the presentation, staff. Let's move on to the next item.
And item number four is the planning director's report.
So this is Leanne Moffett. I'm actually covering it for Chris Buhli. He wanted to let you know that we are canceling the November eighth meeting. And so our next meeting will be November fifteenth and we don't have any other items to report.
Thank you. And that, I guess, would cover the miscellaneous scheduling items.
Yes, sorry. I might have jumped ahead.
So we'll call the last item. Are there any public comments?
No, there are no additional public comments.
All right, with that, we will stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your investment for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you all.